Is Jeremiah in prayer? Almighty God, you have given us this wonderful land as our heritage. Make us always remember your generosity and consistently do your will. Bless those who hold office in the government of Lompoc that they may do their work in a spirit of wisdom and kindness and justice. Help them use their authority to serve faithfully and to promote the general welfare. And make us who came from many nations with many different languages a united people. We ask this in your holy name. Amen. [applause] To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice.
[inaudible] Can we ask the people from Mormon Helping Hands program to come forward, please? This is a proclamation regarding the Mormon Helping Hands Renewing California Parks Program. Whereas parks are an essential component to the individual health, well-being, happiness, and quality of life for all human beings, making our communities more attractive places to live and work; and whereas parks assist us to become more connected with nature and our families, contributing to youth development, social and cultural exchange, public health, recreation, environmental health, and community building; and whereas the current economic crisis has caused severe cutbacks in funding to clean, beautify, and maintain city, county, and state parks so that they can fulfill their valued functions; and whereas Lompoc encourages and supports efforts by its citizens, its service clubs, its faith-based organization, and others to promote volunteerism; and whereas Mormon Helping Hands is a significant international volunteer program sponsored by the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints which provides community assistance and disaster relief throughout the world; and whereas Mormon Helping Hands has designated May 8th as a day of community service throughout the state of California, in which over 50,000 Californians will assist in renewing city, county, and state parks, including the citizens of Lompoc who will participate in the Riverbend Multipurpose Trail Cleanup and Renovation. Now therefore, I am Mike Samenski, Mayor of the City of Lompoc, to hereby proclaim Saturday, May 8th, as Mormon Helping Hands Day, and on behalf of the City Council, I acknowledge and thank the volunteers and the Mormons for their contribution to the community. Would you like to present this? Thank you. Thank you. You would like to present anything? I'd like you to take it.
I'm John Doyle, and the chairman kind of ran the signing up of the volunteers. We have approximately 100 folks ready Saturday to assist in the Riverbend Multipurpose Trail Project. Thank you very much to sending the call, the city employee of Urban Forestry Department for organizing this and her staff. We really look forward to helping out Saturday morning and to helping beautify what is already a beautiful part of our state and the Central Coast. We're happy to be able to do this and look forward to continuing this on an annual basis. So we appreciate the city's support. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and we look forward to doing this again next year.
Thank you. Along the same line, Youth Week, if we can ask the representatives from the Elks to come forward. And another proclamation, whereas the Benevolent and Protective Order of Elks has designated the week beginning May 2nd as Youth Week to honor Americans junior citizens for their accomplishments and to give fitting recognition of their services to the community, to the state, and their nation; and whereas Lompoc Lodge Number 2274 will sponsor an observance during the week in tribute to the junior citizens of this community; and whereas no event could be more deserving of our support and participation than one dedicated to these young people who represent the nation's greatest resource and who in the years ahead will assume the responsibility for the advancement of our society; whereas our youth need the guidance, the inspiration, the encouragement which we alone can give in order to develop these qualities of character essential for future leadership and to go forth to serve America; and whereas to achieve this worthy objective, we should demonstrate our partnership with youth, our understanding of their hopes and aspirations, and a sincere willingness to help prepare them every way for the responsibilities and opportunities of citizenship. Now therefore, I am Mike Samenski, Mayor of the City of Lompoc, do hereby proclaim the week of May 2nd through 8th as Youth Week and urge all citizens to participate wholeheartedly in this observance. And I'm pleased to present this to the exalted ruler of the Lompoc Elks. Would you like either of you to say something?
Thank you very much.
I'm Charlie Bishop, Lompoc Lodge, Elks, Exalted Ruler. Once again, we are proud to support the outstanding accomplishments of the youths of our community. Thank you very much.
Police Chief, Tim Dabney, would you like to come forward? National Police Week, Peace Officers Memorial Day. I'll have some, a little more to say on that in a couple minutes when we talk about a trip that Councilman Martner and I made. Whereas the Congress and the President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which it falls as National Police Week; and whereas the members of the Lompoc Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedom of the residents of Lompoc; and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency, and that members of the Lompoc Police Department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression; and whereas the men and women of the Lompoc Police Department unceasingly provide a vital public service, now therefore, I am Mike Samenski, Mayor of the City of Lompoc, call upon the citizens of Lompoc and upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the week of May 9th through 15th, 2010, as National Police Week, with appropriate ceremonies and observances to commemorate law enforcement officers past and present who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities and in so doing have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation to preserving the rights and security of all people. I further call upon all citizens to observe May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those officers who have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of duty and to recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. In witness thereof, I have here to forset my hand, signed this proclamation on behalf of the City of Lompoc, and I want to present this to the chief, please. Thank you. Would you like to say something?
I do. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members, members in the audience, and those of you at home. There are more than 900,000 sworn law enforcement officers now serving the United States. In 2008, there were an estimated 4.9 million violent crimes and 16.3 million property crimes committed in our nation. However, the Bureau of Justice Statistics reports that violent crime rate fell 41% and property crime declined 32% between 1999 and 2008. In Lompoc, we have seen Part 1 crimes drop nearly 31% during the same time period. But crime fighting has taken its toll. On average, one law enforcement officer is killed in the line of duty somewhere in the United States every 53 hours. Courageous men and women daily put themselves in harm's way for our benefit. Since the first recorded police death in 1792, there have been nearly 19,000 names engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Memorial. Among those are the former Lompoc Police Officer Frank Trejo and former Lompoc Police Agent Rich May. Deputy Trejo was shot and killed in the line of duty on March 3rd, 1995. While serving the Sonoma County Sheriff's Department, Deputy Trejo had served the Lompoc Community as an officer between 1969 and 1977. Agent Rich May served the City of Lompoc between 1989 and 2004 as a patrol officer, a DARE instructor, a detective, and founder of the Lompoc Valley Police Activities League. Officer May was shot and killed by a gang member while serving with the East Palo Alto Police Department on January 7th, 2006. That case has now been concluded, and his murderer faces a life sentence, a death penalty, excuse me. The President has declared May 15th as National Peace Officers Memorial Day to honor the law enforcement officers who have given their lives in service to their communities throughout the United States. Thousands of officers, family members, and dignitaries will gather at the National Memorial in Washington, DC to honor the 110 law enforcement officers who were killed in the line of duty during 2009. These officers will be added to the memorial, bringing the total of the fallen to 18,983. We also pause to remember Agent Christopher Keyes, who died on January 12th, 2007, and although his premature death was not in the line of duty, he served our community well for 12 years as a reserve officer, patrol officer, traffic officer, detective supervisor, and narcotics officer. Agent Keyes was 38 years old. So on May 15th, we will remember these officers who were cut down in the prime of life. But we should also remember the thousands of officers who at this very moment stand ready to defend our freedoms, our property, and put themselves in harm's way for our benefit. These modern-day knights wear emblems and badges as symbols of our community that carry the authority that we as citizens bestow upon them to preserve the peace and protect our way of life. When one of them falls, a part of our community is taken with them. So we pause to remember those who have made the ultimate sacrifice for our safety and thank those who continue to stand watch over our homes, our businesses, and our families. Thank you.
This month is Water Awareness Month. And if we saw in the first 10 years of this century a lot of volatility in the electric business, I expect that in the water business in the years to come, we will see even more difficulty, water shortages, and more attention to the need to be aware of where our water comes from. The proclamation here that's been prepared is whereas water is our nation's most precious natural resource and a basic and essential need of every living creature; and whereas the citizens of Lompoc have continued to maintain their per capita water consumption at or below 1989 consumption levels and have demonstrated their knowledge of the importance of conserving our limited water resources; and whereas to ensure an ample supply of good quality water for our community, we must continue to work together to effectively conserve and protect the quantity of our local resource; and whereas during the month of May, the City of Lompoc joins with other cities and water districts throughout the nation to spread a water conservation message; and whereas throughout the year, the City of Lompoc sponsors a wide variety of water conservation programs such as the Toilet Retrofit Program, Public and School Education Programs, Water Audits, Dishwater, Dishwasher, and Clothes Washer Rebate Programs; and whereas the city sponsored an art contest in April 2010 for kindergarten through sixth grade with a theme of water, our most precious resource. Now therefore, I am Mike Samenski, Mayor of the City of Lompoc, California, do hereby proclaim May 2010 as Water Awareness Month and urge all citizens to join with me in support of the efforts of the Utility Department of the City of Lompoc to educate Lompoc citizens in water awareness. In witness thereof, I have set my hand on this official proclamation on the fourth day of May, Mike Samenski. I would like to, I would like to call up Bernie Melis on behalf of the Lompoc Water --
Thank you.
Thank you. You knew that, huh?
I knew that.
Bernie, I want to be glad that you and the department, thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
And invite you, if you want to say something?
I'd just like to say, behalf of the City of Lompoc Water Distribution, thank you very much, City Council and public for thinking about water, because we make a lot of it every day, and hopefully we keep on doing that.
Thank you.
And we'll make it safe to drink, and a lot, a lot of hard work, but it's definitely worth it. I'm the lead man. I've been here for 13 years, and it's been great. Thank you.
It's kind of timely, because just this morning, I signed a contract to replace the toilets that I have, three of them in my house, with ultra-low flush toilets. I put in the low flush in mid-'90s when they were first on the market, and this further cuts the water usage in half, and I do expect to take advantage of a rebate program that's very generous on the part of the city that will help pay part of the costs of that, of those additions to my house. National Public Works Week, Larry Bean. Whereas public works services provided in our community are an integral part of the citizens' everyday lives; and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital toward the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water sewers, streets, highways, public buildings, and solid waste collection; and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services; and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities as well as their planning, their design, their construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skills of public works officials; and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the works they perform. Now therefore, I am Mike Samenski, Mayor of the City of Lompoc, do hereby proclaim the week of May 16th through May 22nd as National Public Works Week in the City of Lompoc, and I call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which public officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. I've set my hand on signing this proclamation on the fourth day of May, and I want to present it to our Public Works Director, and I want to encourage everybody in the city, when you see our people at work, whether it's water, whether it's solid waste, whether it's streets, whatever, give them a smile and a nod, and thank them for what they're doing for our community. Larry?
Thank you very much, Mayor Samenski. In the early '60s, the American Public Works Association was formed, and ever since then, they have been promoting this week to recognize public works throughout our country. This year's theme is based upon "Public Works Above, Below, and All Around You," and it's a good time for me to remind all of you in the public that the City of Lompoc is a full-service city. We do provide our own services in Parks Department, Utility Department, and a Public Works Department. In Public Works, we have take care of street maintenance, concrete, asphalt, striping, signing, painting. We have a full-service engineering section that designs, bids, and manages construction and inspects all public projects. In Public Works, we have solid waste collection and a full-service landfill to dispose of the solid waste. We operate an airport. We operate a transit system. We have our own, provide our own fleet maintenance and our own maintenance for public buildings. In the Utility Department, we provide electricity to our citizens, water, as you just heard earlier, wastewater, and a Wi-Fi system. Our Parks Department provides park maintenance and urban forestry for our trees that are in the parkways of our city. And again, I'd like to take this time to thank all those employees of the City of Lompoc, and I accept this proclamation in their honor. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And finally, Compost Awareness Week. And I'd like to ask Bob Engel.
I'm Bob's older brother.
Oh, okay.
I thought it would be appropriate if I came tonight.
Well, we have for you a proclamation. Let me read it, if you will. Whereas the composting councils of Canada, Australia, United Kingdom, and the United States have declared May the 2nd through the 8th to be the annual International Composting Awareness Week; and whereas organic materials suitable for composting represent up to 70% of the materials that are landfilled each year, and composting is an effective form of waste reduction, reuse, and recycling; and whereas home composting and mulching are ways citizens can take individual responsibility for reducing the volume of waste generated at home and keeping waste reduction costs down; and whereas compost improves soil structure, reduces erosion and runoff of valuable topsoil without depleting wildlife habitats, supplies soil with a variety of macro and micronutrients, and enables soils to use less water; and whereas community sustainability is enhanced by composting green waste, biosolids, and other organic materials and promoting the use of renewable resources in landscaping, horticulture, and agriculture; and whereas returning organic resources to the soil is a method of decreasing dependence on chemical fertilizers, decreasing erosion, and reducing water consumption and non-pollution, and non-point pollution; and whereas the City of Lompoc composts its biosolids, which contributes to the achievement of environmental sustainability; and whereas Engel and Gray, Regional Composting Facility in Santa Maria, and Valley Compost and Topsoil Inc. in Buellton have been successfully composting organic material for sustainable agricultural practices, and Valley Rock in Lompoc distributes such compost to local markets. Now therefore, I am Mike Samenski, Mayor of the City of Lompoc, do hereby proclaim the week of May 2nd through 8th as Compost Awareness Week and urge all citizens to recognize and participate in these worthwhile efforts. In witness thereof, I set my hand and the official seal, the City of Lompoc, on this proclamation as of May 4th, 2010. Thank you. Could you like to say anything?
Yes, she would. Okay. Mayor, fellow council members, thank you on behalf of the United States Composting Council for recognizing Compost Awareness Week. This international effort is important in that it brings awareness to recycling of organic matter into a great beneficial product. Lompoc has been composting their biosolids into an organic nutrient-rich product for many years. Utilizing these organic resources improves the health of soil in the natural way. Tonight, I brought all the council members, a little sample of compost, and for each of you, it's got some instructions here on the proper use. And Susan will be coming around in a week or two to see and judge each one of you on the improvements to your yard and your flower beds. So I want to thank you again for recognizing Compost Awareness Week, and thank you for having us and supporting compost.
City Administrators, or Executive Directors Status Report. It's an informational only item? Do you have a report?
I just want to advise you, Mr. Mayor and Council, that Paralegal Terry Schwab will present the first item of business under Council request, providing Council a status report on code enforcement activities. The city's staff code enforcement team has discussed a five-pronged approach to changing parking regulations and is seeking Council direction before preparing a draft ordinance to implement any or all of that approach. And in response to Council's expressed desire during the special meeting workshops of November 14th and January 19th to enhance code enforcement efforts, staff at the Midyear Budget Review Special Workshop of February 6th proposed and Council-approved formation of the city's staff code enforcement team and preliminarily approved the enforcement, code enforcement officer position to work with Citation Authority. This individual will work hand in hand with police officers and CSOs. So with Council's preliminary approval of the code enforcement officer position, Human Resources staff will return at next council meeting, seeking Council's approval of the new classification code enforcement officer, and that will be funded by community block grant monies. And this is currently approved and allocated, and, you know, this will take care of code enforcement activities. Thank you.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, this is an informational item tonight. We'll be getting a presentation on what we're doing to expand our code enforcement efforts and a number of recommendations regarding our parking ordinances. Staff is looking for advice from the Council as to how we're thinking so they can put together an ordinance that will come back to us. There won't be any approval of actions tonight, but even though the agenda doesn't show it, there will be, I will have a period of time for public comment period if people would like to comment on some of the proposals that we'll, that we'll hear, because they do affect your ability to use the streets around your home for, for parking of vehicles. Can we ask Ms. Schwab to come forward and begin her presentation?
I'm presenting the Code Enforcement Status Report. The code enforcement team consists of Laurel Barcelona, City Administrator, Chief Dabney, Chief White, Arlene Pelster, Community Development Director, Larry Bean, Public Works Director, Joe Penone, City Attorney, Police Captain Demming, and me. We have been meeting every other week since February 2nd. I'll just briefly go over the status report that you have in your binder. There are many departments that are involved in code enforcement efforts in the city. The Police Department is mainly responsible for vehicle abatement and graffiti removal. The Fire Department is responsible for public safety violations and dangerous buildings. The Fire Department, along with the Building Division, enforces the State Building Code Regulations. The Community Development Department and Planning Division enforces state land use regulations, City of Lompoc zoning code regulations, and conditions of approval imposed during city land use entitlement processes. The Solid Waste Division of the Public Works Department is responsible for code enforcement activities related to solid waste and street right-of-way. Parks and Rec also participates in graffiti removal. The code enforcement team meetings have resulted in better communication between the responsible departments that led to the recent successful completion of abatement at 514 South G Street. We've also commenced the municipal code process for abatement at 1128 North A Street, and we have another property coming up for that same process. I'm pleased to report that the Police Department and community volunteer groups are currently in the process of coordinating a citywide graffiti cleanup day in July. They are expecting approximately 200 volunteers to participate and eradicate as much graffiti as possible. The team has discussed some enhancements to the code enforcement efforts. The first item is, as Laurel mentioned, was the code enforcement officer under the Community Development Department. He or she would coordinate activities for all nuisance and building code enforcement efforts, participate in inspections, request assistance of police officers when needed for issuance of citations, or, as she mentioned, that person may also have Citation Authority, follow-up to ensure identified violations are corrected within a reasonable time period, and refer all uncorrected violations to the City Attorney's Office for abatement action. The position would be funded by $100,000 currently set aside in the CDBG program. This item should be appearing on the next council meeting. This item should be appearing on the next council meeting. Staff is seeking direction from the council concerning proposed changes to the Lompoc Municipal Code concerning parking. The present code allows for parking of vehicles for up to 72 hours on city streets. There is no restriction for RVs or trailers presently in the code. The team has come up with several proposals to change parking requirements, but before we proceed with drafting an ordinance, we are seeking your direction. The proposals are outlined on the last page of the report in your binder, consist of five different options. The proposals are: removal of parked vehicles for random street sweeping following 24 hours notice, this would be cars that people didn't voluntarily move; prohibition of parking of unhitched trailers on city streets at any time except for semi-trailers on truck routes or moving trailers in actual use; prohibition of parking of hitched trailers between the hours of 12:00 and 6:00 a.m. with some allowances for temporary parking permits; prohibition of self-propelled recreational vehicles parked on city streets between the hours of 12:00 and 6:00 a.m., also with some allowances for temporary parking permits; and imposition of progressive lines with three steps, $50, $100, and $250 for repeat offenses within any 12-month period. Staff would like to receive your direction for proceeding. Thank you. This concludes my report, but I'm available for questions, and many of the team members are also available.
Thank you. Are there any questions of Ms. Schwab at this time from the council?
Mr. Mayor, are we going to take public testimony and then have a comment period?
And then we'll have discussion back here, but I didn't know whether, if anybody has any question at this time, we can ask Terry.
I have some questions, budgetary questions. I don't know if this is the time to ask them or later, and I don't know who is the right person to ask the questions to regarding the budget, how the monies are being allocated in code enforcement. So I don't know what the member of the staff would be, the appropriate member of the staff to answer those questions.
It's Ms. Schwab's report. Ask her, and if she...
If I could answer it, I would.
Has staff all behind her.
Thank you. I have a couple of things that I would like to address at this time. They are not pertaining whether we need a new ordinance and what the right ordinance is. I would like to ask questions about the existing enforcement that goes on today and how much money is the city is spending and how effective that is, just to get an idea of how much all of this costs. I did request an email previously, and I think you compiled it, and I thank you for that. And in conclusion, I see that the Planning and the Building Department have been allotted about $124,000 in the budget to do what they do, and if you read the report, it's basically based on complaint-driven, and it has to do with either building code violations, and it really does not pertain any street oversized vehicle. Is that a correct statement? That those $124,000 are not being really used for oversized vehicles?
It is when they're parked on a front yard setback, yes, the Planning Department does process those complaints. But not parked on, if it's parked on the street, generally the Police Department.
Right. So for the Police Department, we approximately have about $80,000. So there is $124,000 going to Building and Planning for these other complaints, and then there is $80,000 for the Police Department to deal with the street abatement. Is that correct, more or less? Yes. Okay.
Pertaining to vehicles, that's...
Okay. Could we get, and I would like to get an idea of how much, how many complaints, and how much have we succeeded with this $124,000 and with this $80,000? And the reason why I'm asking this is because we will be asking for more money, and I want to see really what is it that we're getting?
Yes, from the Police Department. I have a report from the chief. Let's see, he, they, 554 parking violations or citations were issued in 2009. Address, they addressed 810 parked vehicles in 2009. Vehicle abatement citations issued were 219. The number of vehicles towed or abated were in 2009 was 155, and the number of vehicles voluntarily moved by owners in 2009 was 655.
That's, okay, thank you very much. So we do have a general, if I look at these numbers, I can say the public is removing the vehicles, the majority 650 versus 155, right?
Right.
Okay. That's important information, at least for me. Thank you very much. As far as the Planning Department, I understand that there were 209, that your email talked about, 209 citations for building code violations. Is that correct?
They have 200, they had 209 open cases which would cover, that covers planning and building, which would include building code violations, but also planning violations, which are kind of separate. But the total number that I have is 209, and they were able to close 125 of those.
And those 125, they were closed in sort of in a consensus agreement with the public, or did they go to court?
No, I don't believe any of them went to court.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Any other comments or questions? And we have, if the public understood, there's two basic parts of this. One is our approval of a new code enforcement program that will dedicate additional hours to the code of enforcement, and with that, if we approve the concept tonight, we'll see the budget for the personnel at the next, at the next meeting. Is that right, Terry? The second phase is that the code enforcement team has looked at our use of our streets and recommended a number of subjects to be dealt with in a new code, and they concern parked vehicles on the streets, trailers, motorhomes parked on the streets, and those they would like us just to give advice tonight before they proceed with an ordinance that will come back to us. If you have any comments on either part of that, we'd invite you to come forward with public comment at this time, and watch the lights, leave a card with your name and phone number so that we can get back with you, and have at it.
My name is Martin Van Nino. I live in Lompoc. I have a lot to say in a very short period of time, so I'm going to talk fast. First of all, point number four, prohibit parking of self-propelled, propelled recreational vehicles of any size between 12:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m. If any of you have RVs, when you go camping with your family and come home late Sunday night, the last thing you are going to do is clean that RV and take it to some outside storage facility late at night on Sunday night. It's going to stay parked in front of your house overnight. So this whole concept of not allowing motorhomes to be parked in front of your property between 6:00, sorry, 12:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m. is ludicrous, in my experience. It's absolutely unfeasible and unfair to the population. The, in my personal case, I have an RV rental business. Not only do I use it myself, but I also rent it out. When renting it out, it needs to be maintained, it needs to be cleaned, it needs to be repaired all the time. I have customers that can call me on a moment's notice, saying, hey, I'm in Lompoc, I want to come by and take a look at your motorhome, see if it's something I want to rent. It has to be available for that, it has to be clean and ready to go. When it comes back off rental, I have to clean it out. Before it goes out on a rental, I have to clean it out. These rentals bring sales, sales tax income to the City of Lompoc, and I pay business tax to the City of Lompoc. It's a small economic activity, but it is an economic activity. It is not big enough of an economic activity to justify buying a piece of land, having a storage facility, putting an office with an internet connection there, and staying there 20, or, you know, all day, five days a week. That's not the kind of business it is. It is a little business that brings a little bit of economic activity. That requires that I be close to my tools so that I can do my repairs. Some of the repairs last more than 12 hours, the glue needs to dry, whatnot. The 72-hour law is already a big problem for me. The 12-hour law is absolutely ludicrous. The, I've prepared for you, I'm going to pass it out, an aerial photograph from Google Earth of my property, and you will all see very clearly that my property absolutely does not have the space for me to park my motorhome neither in the driveway nor on either side of the house. I also do not have an alley, there's no possibility to park behind my house. There is one and only one possibility for parking the motorhome on my property, and that is literally on my front lawn. And you can see that I've copied and pasted, you can see an aerial photograph of the way it is now, and of what it would look like if I did indeed park that on my front lawn. And then I've also copied and pasted photographs of what it would actually look like. And on the third page, you can see the way it looks now from the intersection of A and Central. It is definitely not going to be a visual or an aesthetic improvement having my RV parked on my front lawn. So I know my time is probably up or close to up. So my point is, there are extenuating circumstances, there are situations, in this case, an economic situation, where having an RV at an outside facility is absolutely untenable. By the way, I did try that once, and that's why I'm now the proud owner of a bolt cutter, because I did actually have to cut the bolt, and cut the storage facility open to get my RV out so that it could go out on a rental. That's not possible in this case, and the law is the way they are. I urge the, well, the 12-hour thing absolutely cannot be acceptable, and I urge the city council to make exceptions for some of us that have economic activities so that we can continue these economic activities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Van Nino. Jgrill.
Good evening. I've been, I'm tempted to say harassing, in other words, would be petitioning the Planning Code Enforcement and the Police Department to intervene in my neighborhood for the last year over parking issues. The net result to this date is zero. So Ms. Martner wanted to know, you know, what does the $80,000 and $120,000, $140,000, what does it get you? It got me nothing. There are, there's a person who has a business and parks tow trucks and other business-related vehicles in our neighborhood. So originally, the complaints went to the Police Department pursuant to the 72-hour limit, and as I hope you understand, the Police Chief's point of view is if it moves any small distance, that's good enough for him. That has never made the slightest sense to me. It is a void of any common sense, and it certainly has nothing to do with the spirit of the law, of the ordinance. So I've never understood Police Chief Dabney's point of view. So that needs to be addressed, is point of view, or the spirit of the law, or if there's a disconnect between what some people might call common sense and the authority who effectively does nothing. The same is true with code enforcement. I've had another, it's the same person, the same, the same problem. This person has a home business use permit for a residence on First Street. This person uses about six different vehicles in the business. Those vehicles are parked on my street, where the girlfriend lives. Well, Lucille Bruce assures me that, whereas the ordinance says he cannot park his vehicles on First Street where the address is, it's perfectly okay to junk up my neighborhood, which is done for a year, and as of this moment, there are two vehicles there now, one over three days, one over a week. So in a year's time, nothing's changed. I've recently complained in writing about a boat parked in a front lawn, a different street now, same neighborhood, different street, a boat and a pickup truck on a front lawn. And I wrote four letters once a week, and at the end of the fourth letter, I talked to the clerk, and she said, well, actually, nothing at all has been done deliberately because they're waiting for this report. Well, this report says nothing about boats in the front yard, or trucks in the front yard, or any front yard. So this report, and that was two weeks ago, that she said they were waiting for this report. So, you know, have they written a letter? I have a tremendous amount to say. I'm surprised and disappointed that I was never invited to any of these meetings, because I'm on the dirty end of the stick. You know, why haven't the authorities talked to me? This report you've got is less than a third of the issues. There are much more issues. When you talk about giving permission, the Police Department, to say that people can park their motorhomes and live in them on a residential street, it brings to my mind, and as I listened to this other gentleman speaking about his business, there's this thing called a residential neighborhood. We have commercial neighborhoods, and manufacturing, and industrial, and residential. So let's not lose sight of the fact that the residents, first and foremost, primarily, we own the residential neighborhood.
Thank you, Mr. Rill.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Mary Bach, and I rise specifically to speak to this issue. I have a quality problem, and that is that I have way too many vehicles and an RV, but that's not what I'm here to speak about tonight. I will take care of my own quality issues with those things. I rise specifically to speak about those people who are homeless, and any of you who have followed the plight of the homeless, especially in California, know that many of them live in RVs. What you will do by enacting such an ordinance may actually be one of the things that causes the deaths of many of our homeless. You would be enacting something that, in my opinion, is very much one of those "not in my backyard" types of legislation. Any of you who are aware of the problems of the homeless understand that many of them do live in RVs, that you should vehemently oppose those things which exclude them from our community simply because we don't want them here. Make them invisible by legislating them away from Lompoc. I don't believe that a spirit of compassion allows for that. The parking of RVs on our city streets, making that illegal, simply criminalizes the homeless, further victimizing them. I ask you to consider the human cost of criminalizing such an issue, which means the homeless who are obviously not able to afford the fines that have been proposed, may end up in our jails as a result. The other thing that I truly want to bring to your attention is that this is something that has the highest impact on the people who can afford it the least. I would like to draw your attention to the hundreds of small entrepreneurs in this town that have small yard maintenance trailers, that unless they own their own property, will have to give up their businesses. Many of us, the guy who takes care of my yard has one, he does not live in a house, he lives in an apartment. That would take away his business. So I hope that what you will do is consider this in light of the people who are less fortunate than we are. I believe that enacting something like this is an arrogant and callous misuse of power. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bach.
I'm Ron Bach. I live in Lompoc. Council members, I agree that we are impacting those least fortunate among us. This will be a progressive taxation on those who can least afford it. I strongly oppose all of these measures. I think that the vehicle abatement should be based on, should be complaint-driven, as it is now, and from my own personal point of view, I would like to be able to park my car in front of my home. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bach. Thank you, Mr. Bach.
This is an important issue to the city and the residents. For many years, there have been some in the city that have taken advantage of the current ordinance. They have merely moved their trailers, recreational vehicles, and other sized vehicles around the city to avoid citation. Now that the city is taking steps to control this abuse, the steps need to be concise and comprehensive. If the owners are allowed to park these vehicles on city streets, it should be for a short period of time. Other cities have dealt with this very issue, and many of them have had great success in controlling this parking problem. I urge you to be concise and comprehensive in crafting this ordinance. These are some of the issues that the city needs to address with a new ordinance. Oversized vehicles interfere with the normal flow of traffic, especially on narrow streets. They create visual obstacles. Bicyclists, and in some cases pedestrians, are exposed to greater traffic dangers by having to go around these large vehicles. Fire and emergency access is reduced, especially on narrow streets, on narrow streets and cul-de-sacs. Recreational vehicles, vehicles sometimes hold large quantities of gasoline and propane, which is highly volatile. They also sometimes hold large quantities of sewage, which can leak onto the streets. Oversized vehicles and trailers parked on residential streets negatively affect the aesthetics and livability of the community and residents. Detached trailers parked on streets constitute a safety hazard, as they do not have an independent braking system. The current parking ordinance, 72 hours, is inadequate to address the problem of parking oversized vehicles and trailers on city streets. Owners should have a limited time to park on the street to load and unload. I, I don't think anybody would wish to deny that. I recommend, though, if you move forward with this ordinance, that you use the technology that's available by allowing people to either apply through an internet site for these permits. There are some cities that are doing that. The other thing is that you should also provide a violation process through that website. The last thing, I think, it should be gradual throughout the city. You're not going to conquer this big problem by going out and trying to get every RV off the streets in one mass move. It's going to have to be progressive and gradual, and I think those that are going to comply are going to comply, and those that are not, are not. And that's the way life is. And I appreciate the council taking consideration of this, and I think you should keep moving forward with it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor and City Councilman Will Skyler, I live in Lompoc. I'm going to take a gamble here. Mayor announced that there really was no action to be taken on this tonight, but I, I kind of feel that there might be. As you mentioned, there were actually two items here, I think there's really three items. You had two reports. One was the, the staff report, and then you had a status report, two separate documents. I believe you got, actually, three documents pertaining to this tonight in your docket. I would like to talk on page number seven of the city status report. The next to the bottom paragraph says, "Staff suggests a special meeting or workshop be scheduled in order to allow adequate public input, as there will be many citizens affected by changes in the parking of trailers and recreational vehicles." Now, I have, I can plead my case, or I would really ask you to maybe take that action, and as this comes forward, have some workshops to do it, because I would like more than five minutes to, to talk on this subject. So I, I think there is an action warranted tonight. Thank you.
John Lynn, City of Lompoc. First, I want you to know that my tow trucks are not parked in David Grill's neighborhood. The next thing I think the council should ask when the staff comes back up is what a front yard setback is for RV parking. I understand setbacks, but I am not familiar with what it has to do with, you know, with regard to RV parking. And what I have noticed is that people are now putting concrete in their yard to park them. So how did we get to where we are tonight? Well, we have three Lompoc citizens with about 50 vehicles between them that have caused this vehicle issue to fester. The current 72-hour limit has not stopped them, as they, their vehicles are licensed and insured. However, there is a private citizen working with one of them to help get rid of his vehicles, and he sold three. Today, the council needs to decide first if we are going from a complaint-based enforcement to a citywide code enforcement. If you decide to move to citywide enforcement, you must then decide what enforcement priorities will be. Council members have stated that they must enforce all laws, but this council must set the priority for the enforcement of those laws. Blanket enforcement is a very slippery slope, and based on two hours of driving around with my wife last night, counting vehicles, I'd like to share some statistics with you. I covered approximately 20% of the city, and this is based on those, I can say with some reasonable statistical certainly, that today, there are about 200 motorhomes parked on the streets of Lompoc. There are about 350 unhooked trailers, and that would include personal trailers and work trailers and utility trailers. There are about 175 trailers connected to vehicles. There are about 100 boats, and there are approximately 300 vehicles that have been moved to parks, lawns, parkways, and other areas that are not on a paved surface and are in violation of city code. Additionally, there are some number that we didn't count that are overhanging the sidewalk and in violation of that code, and another group that are parked within the setback that was discussed earlier by staff. So approximately 1,125 citizens have an average, have vehicles parked that would be in violation of this. I would point out that each of those household has about an average of three votes. So when you take this into consideration, remember that it's not just those of us who come and speak, but it's all those who do not come and speak. I think maybe with, oh, one parting thought, my wife counted basketball hoops, which were sitting in the city street, and I would surely not want us to go out and cite those, but they're also a violation, and there are about 150 of those. With graffiti and gangs and drugs and other issues to solve, it seems like the 50 vehicles belonging to these individuals, this might be just a little bit of overkill. And I could go into the details of what's wrong with it, but my clock's running out. To help with these problems, I brought this evening a copy of all the complaints that I obtained from the city clerk for the years 2005, 2006, and 2007. Believe it or not, we read all of these, and we developed a synopsis. And what we learned from them, because we were trying to determine if it was an industrial area problem back then, was that they were mostly neighbor disputes. And if one of the council members would be interested, it would be probably easier to read mine than dig them back out of city records. And before we make these decisions, I think that's something we need to do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Lynn.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Ralph Arman, Lompoc. First, I'd also like to come on the same page that Will commented on, and down in that same paragraph he was referring to, makes a reference to a discussion of the pros and cons to the approach that was previously provided to the council in writing, although it wasn't attached on the website, so I don't know what that is, but it'd be nice to know what those pros and cons were, so we could discuss them at the same level that the council does. As far as the suggestion that various measures here would require getting approval or permit or something from the chief of police to park and various areas, that type of thing, I just don't know who's going to reimburse our, the police department for the time and expense of somebody going out and keeping track of all the permits and what have you. I personally have a real problem with enforcement officers and parking, because I've had previous bad experiences, particularly in Santa Barbara. I had a vehicle towed, it was vandalized by the towing company, my toolbox was stolen out of it, and it was illegally parked a vehicle, and there was never any notification on it, the vehicle, when I showed up for work the next day, it was parked in front of my office, but it wasn't there. I thought somebody stole it. So that's why, and the only way I found out that it had been towed. So I had a little jaunt just on that, when it comes to that. But getting over here to your recommendations, this removal of parked vehicles for random street sweeping following 24 hours of notice, I'm not sure what that means. I'm assuming you're going to go out and notice a neighborhood with a 24-hour thing? We do that already when you're going to do the trees or any other street work, so I don't know why you need a new ordinance to do something we already do. And the other thing is, if you read the vehicle code, which your attorney will show you, any streets coming off of a state highway, which we have a couple of state highways through our town, all of those have to be noticed with a 17-by-22-inch sign giving the hours that your street sweeping's doing and all that. So we're going to have a lot of signage that's going to have to be put up, and that's another expenses I think we need to look at and maintain, so. The other thing is prohibit parking of unhitched trailers of any size and variety on the city street at any time, except for semi-trailers. Why that? If these people are operating a trucking business, they should have a place then to store that trailer. Now, they're all over the town, sitting there with the trailer, just the tongue dropped on the pavement. If you're going to do my trailer, I don't park it on the street, but if somebody else is like me, that has parked their trailer in the street for a little while, well, not on it, you better do the commercial ones, too. And I agree, this, the parking between 12 and 6, there's so many ramifications that could come up on that. People, I loaned my trailer to a lady, so her husband was getting out of the Air Force, she needed my trailer to go get his stuff. She got the trailer the night before, so she would give the leave at 5:00 in the morning. Well, in this case, she'd be violating the law, so. I think there's a lot of work that has to be done on this, and I think a lot of time's being spent on something we don't really need at this point. We have the 72-hour, I think that's enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arman.
Arlen Seacrest, Lompoc. I live on a dead-end street, and for the 40 years I've lived there, I've had a trailer parked most of the time next door. The only complaint that's ever come is some of my neighbors have asked me, "Why don't I turn them in?" Well, at one time, it was a city employee, and your enforcement officer lived right across the street. Why didn't she do her job? I don't know. At any rate, that doesn't bother me. The thing that does bother me is when my mother-in-law was alive, and she had artificial knees and a thick lawn, people would, the commuters would park in front of her house, so she couldn't park there. I asked the city what to do about it. They said I could get a handicap zone. But then, when we came down and parked, we would get the ticket immediately when we, they were seen. So I would suggest that we go to a residence parking-type thing, too, like Santa Barbara has and other communities in the area. Around Cottage Hospital, they're everywhere on those streets, and it's for residential parking only. That would have worked up here at our local hospital in behalf of those people all these years that have never had any place to park in front of their house because of the hospital customers. Anyway, that's just my thoughts on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seacrest.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. My name is Mark Buscaran. Thank you for the opportunity to speak about item number one. I see removable, removal of parked vehicles for random street sweeping. Don't we already have random street sweeping? Like I came and mentioned previously, there's a street sweeping schedule that can be downloaded. Frequently, it's followed, but frequently also it is not. I basically can't support any of the four or five items here. I do agree that Lompoc has parking issues upon its streets. I do support the need for regularly scheduled street sweeping, not random street sweeping. And I do support being able to park my vehicles in front of my residents, but not necessarily my neighbor's residents. Along the lines of what Arlen said, I think perhaps some type of permit-based parking scheme, as similar to what appears annually in the area of Ryan Park during Flower Festival, would not be asking too much. If we can do it for them for one week a year, and it's good, and it works, why can't we do it citywide? Parking permit for a certain side of the street. Let's see, Lompoc's great. I love Lompoc. I love living here. I've loved living here for almost 45 years. However, every once in a while, I need to get out. And let me tell you, when you get on the plane, all the problems about what's going on at home disappear. But if I have another problem, wondering where my second car is going to be towed to, and how much I'm going to spend $40 a day to have it towed, to have it stored, multi-hundreds of dollars a day to have it towed away, and when I come back four days a week, two weeks later, I'll be happy to say that the tow company will own my car, because there is no way I'm paying several thousands of dollars to get that car back, and there's no way that I'm going to be married to Lompoc and not leave when I feel like I need to leave. So again, take a look at what the other cities are doing. One of the cities I can mention is Monterey. They had some parking issues. And again, take a look at the permit-based system, similar to what Ryan Park has. These little signs spring up magically from the grass every July. And that's about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Buscaran. Is there anybody else at this time? Yes.
Good evening. My name's John Douglas. I have a couple of questions here, posing the actual things that they had pointed out as suggestions. In the actual staff report, it actually indicates that the people are moving their vehicles, so it indicates that there is not a problem for that. There are some that are not, but these are drastic measures to be tried. Let's see, the staff reports that the people have been taking advantage of the current 72-hour parking ordinance in a negative manner. However, the people are actually abiding by it. If a person has an RV which is registered, runs, et cetera, and they move it, they are not doing anything illegal except to turn all RV owners into criminals with illegal vehicles. They also reported that RVs and trailers make it difficult for residents, presumably in cars, trucks, and motorcycles, and other non-RV vehicles are to find it difficult to find parking. Vehicle parking is vehicle parking, generally on a first-come, first-served basis. By paying our registration fees and taxes to the state, we afforded the opportunity and/or right a registered motor vehicle to use the highway and/or streets, whether for conveyance or parking when not in motion. This right is the same for all RVs, trailers, cars, trucks, motorcycles, et cetera. The vehicles may be different, but the right of use is the same. There is certainly not a priority to cars and trucks' use over that of an RV. They are different but equal. If it takes two cars to take up the same space as an RV, we as RV owners would be able to complain that cars are two times the problem for parking than we are, rather than we park elsewhere until the space is open. A license plate fee from the state allows 24/7, 366 days of highway-street use. Is it the city ready to reimburse 500 RV owners 80% of their fees if their use is restricted to 50 days a year? How will any of this be enforced? Will it still be complaint-driven? We can show that many of these complaints are neighborhood, it's one neighbor harassing or using the police as a harassment tool. How will it be, how will it be paid for? And how will this vehicle discrimination be enforced? Can we file for a grant from the California Department of Parking and Recreation to see if they can help us? So we'll now make RVs and trailers off-highway vehicles? Perhaps we can set up an off-highway parking lot next to our off-highway vehicle park that is now being discussed for the city. There's no off-street parking available for RVs in Lompoc, particularly for people on fixed fixed incomes or living in apartments. This includes storage facilities such as mini storages. It's not reasonable to have to drive 40 to 60 miles round trip just to get your RV out of an expensive storage to go for a vacation of any length. It would cost thousands of dollars to post-parking restriction signs all over this city. Where would this be money coming from? The program with the fines wouldn't be enough to generate it because the signs would have to be up first. Also, would you put up large signs welcoming tourists to Lompoc and then let them know as they come into town that they can't park on the street from 12 to 6? I'd be interested to find out what the Chamber of Commerce and the tourist board would think of that. In summary, if all the vehicles run or registered and move in a timely manner, there's no need for more restrictive parking ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello. My name's Pamela Kelly, and I'm a 30-year resident of Lompoc, and I've lived in the house I live in now for 18 years. I live in a cul-de-sac, and it's a very nice neighborhood. Or it was. Anyway, there's a lot of abuse with this parking, especially RVs, towed trucks, and it's not a 24-hour thing. It's like, it, it's a lot longer than 72 hours, week, two weeks, a month. And as I said before, I live on a cul-de-sac, and it also interferes with our mail, our trash pickup. And these people are storing their, their large oversized vehicles on the street. And, and it really makes the neighborhood look bad. I worry about my property value now, and I just wanted to let you know the problems that I've been having in my residence. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Kelly. Is there anyone else that would like to speak at this time? Seeing no one rise, we'll close the public comment period. We'll bring it back to the council. I think we're dealing with a number of, a number of different issues with respect to the laws and the codes. And if you don't mind, I'd like to ask staff for some clarification. As I understand it, the 72-hour rule is a state law. Is that correct? Or is that one of our own?
It is a state law. It's also adopted in the city code.
So on that one, I agree with the position of the police department that they can't use it, they can't determine whether a car left, drove to work, and came back if it looks like it's only three feet or four feet from where it was parked yesterday. They're going to, in order to cite. If the car has been moved from where it was yesterday or 72 hours ago, that, that is the law that's, that's enforced. You have different officers out there looking at the vehicle, and no one, it would be, we're not going to station somebody there to make sure it isn't moved for 72 hours. And, and so it's, 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 it may be a game, and it may be fun to some people, but, but that's, I think the way it's enforced, as I understand it, is just about all over the state, is if the vehicle is moved, if, we're not going to be able to enforce any kind of a citation. Is that right?
You're, you're correct. It's very difficult for the enforcement officers to know whether it went around the block, when it went across country and came back, or whether it went three feet.
We have front yard issues that are zoning. We also have home use permit issues, and I would like someone from the planning department to discuss both of those. If there's a home use permit for a business of any kind, as I understand it, that business is not supposed to in any way affect the neighborhood, the integrity of the residential neighborhood. Is that correct?
That's correct. However, it does not limit the business owner from parking the vehicle elsewhere. And you are also correct, the front yard parking ordinance is in the zoning ordinance, and it says that if you do wish to park your vehicle in the front yard setback, it needs to be on a paved surface.
But you could pave the front lawn, and you could park all your vehicles
You can, yes.
On what used to be the lawn.
Correct.
Got a question. Okay. Are there?
One question following that up. When you, when you go to put concrete on your property, isn't there a certain amount of property that cannot have the concrete on it?
No, unless it is in an approved subdivision that has approved landscape plans. But most of the homes that weren't part of those newer subdivisions, you could conceivably pave over your front yard.
In public works, I've been hearing about increased stormwater treatment. I've been hearing of increased emphasis on this, by the state, to sweeping the streets to keep objectionable material, material from going into the, into the stormwater system, into the rivers. Can I get a, can I get a comment on that? I know our, our sweeping has been somewhat sporadic, but isn't there, isn't there a future that says that it has to be swept?
Yes. Our street sweeping schedule, we try our very best to sweep the streets twice a month. With furloughs, workers' comp injuries, et cetera, we've been missing that target from time to time. Our stormwater management plan requires us to sweep the streets once a month, and we have to weigh the material we take off the streets and report that at the end of the year. We're doing fairly well in complying with that part of it. Mandatory street sweeping, or moving of your car inside of the street or a whole neighborhood at a time, will require signage on every street in town to do that. Some years ago, we made an estimate at that, and it came close to a half a million dollars to install the first set of signs that met the legal requirement. Lot of money. I don't know that everyone understood, I think it's A, Proposal A, the first one, about random sweets, street sweeping. What that was, was put in there for was, there's a neighborhood that's really dirty, the cars aren't being moved, we can never get a sweeper next to the curb. We'd have our street division go out and put up the temporary signs, you have to move your car in 24 hours, and we'd get that street cleaned up. That was the concept that was put forward there. I thought it was a pretty good idea. It would, it would not require this half a million dollars' worth of signs. It's just a lot of temporary signs. Mr. Harman's correct. We do do that when there's a construction project, and we have, the people comply and move their cars, but we don't go out and tow the cars. I think in discussions with our city attorney, in these meetings, we talked about, let's put it in the ordinance that we have the right to tow the cars, and we could be much more effective in cleaning the streets. Are there any more questions? I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Ms. Martner?
I have some comments. I don't necessarily have a specific question to Mr. Bean. I was one of the first council members that made the argument that I think that this city does need a more aggressive code enforcement. And when I made that argument, I started by the premise that I thought that it needed to be looked in the context of economic development. And I particularly tried to emphasize that I thought that commercial properties in this town needed to have some level of attention that they don't have today. I have to say that I'm somewhat disappointed with this report that has totally taken the whole thing into oversized vehicles, RV neighborhood issues. I do think that that is an issue that needs to be addressed, but there is one other aspect that we're missing here, and that is commercial property. There is commercial property that is literally abandoned in this city, and I think that we need to do some code enforcement. What happened to that? Why is the code enforcement team not talking about that? And, you know, I'm, I'm distressed by that. Let's move into the neighborhood, which is what we have heard all tonight, comments regarding oversized vehicles in neighborhoods. And there are, there are many different issues, and each of these issues are going to have to be dealt, I think, very specifically. There are the issues of homeless. Are we going to be displacing the homeless? Well, should the city put more money in homeless shelters instead of allowing RVs to park in our streets and have homeless live? I don't think we should. We need to do something about that. We have many small business owners with trailers that is their living. Should they be parked in, you know, in neighborhoods where other neighbors feel that is degrading their, their property value? They both have a point, and I think we need to deal with it. We need to make our neighborhoods, neighborhoods look better. We need to make sure that our people in our town has a job and have a living to make. So it is a very difficult problem, and, and we're getting caught up in this, the 72 hours and, and all of this kind of stuff. I think we have a bigger problem here, and, and it is a much bigger problem. Is the town looking worse than what it did five years ago, 10 years ago? Everybody would say yes. Everybody would say yes. There is more RVs on the street, there is more trailers, there is more trash, and I think it's only natural for people to say, "Let's fix it. Let's make our town look better." So we're not really addressing that point, are we? We're got, we're kind of getting caught up in the little logistics about 72 hours versus no 72 hours and that kind of stuff. I mean, how are we going to satisfy all the problems that we have? I again go back to my initial request, which was, let's focus first on commercial property. And the reason why we need to focus on commercial property is because we need economic development in this town, and we do need to make our town more appealing for businesses to come. We should not forget the RV parking because what we have today is not working. We're spending $124,000 plus $80,000, and the RVs are still there. So we need to do a new ordinance. There is no question about that. We're going to have to do a new ordinance because the present ordinance is not using our money effectively. We did hear that we can get complaints, and nothing happens, and there is more complaints, and they get moved two feet, three feet away. So there are two things that we need to do. We need to change our ordinance so our money is better spent, and two, I think we need to put back on the table commercial property code enforcement, which is not here in this report at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martner. Mr. Durham?
Well, I've heard several comments, I mean, pros and cons, you know, to the issue, ranging from overkill to targeting the homeless, which is a word that's been used several times tonight, which is ludicrous because that's not it. You know, we might lose votes. Caltrans, I've worked on the Highway Patrol for 30 years. We closed down the road many times, and I paid registration, couldn't use those roads. So that argument doesn't hold water. The problem is, our police department has done a tremendous job over the last, well, at least the last year that I know of, because I've called several times on issues. And when they would come out, they would tag the vehicle, then the gentleman or woman would come out after the officer leaves and move it a couple of inches. The officer comes back, it's not in the spot where it was marked. What's the officer going to do? Tag it again. Statement was made by a citizen that it's a game, and it's fun. Keep, keep it coming. Well, I don't know about the people that are against us having a workshop to discuss this issue. I don't know why you're so adamant about it, because tonight, we're talking about setting up ideas and possibly doing a workshop. Like the mayor said, we're not going to decide anything tonight, other than the fact that we might schedule a workshop. I'm tired of seeing many areas in the city continuously be used as a storage lot for many vehicles that if they were in my neighborhood, I would be livid. I don't like the way some of them are parked around schools. They create a hazard for the kids. They create, not only for the kids, but the drivers, you know, driving along near a school, students walking across the street, never happens, right? Kid walks in front of a motorhome, in between two motorhomes, or in between a motorhome and a trailer, or a motorhome and a hunk of junk, you don't see the kid, you strike the kid. It's a hazard. So we need, we need, we do need to address it. So whether it be, you know, any one of these five suggestions are something that the council and coincides with, you know, the citizens of this community, we've got to do something to improve the visual contact look for people that come in our community. I've, I've talked to some people that have recently moved back to Lompoc, and they're appalled at what it was and what it is now. So like Councilman Martner said, there has been a drastic change, and it hasn't been for the positive when it comes to the problem with our parked vehicles.
Thank you, Mr. Durham. Mr. Lingle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also agree with Ms. Martner on her other point, that this originated with complaints about commercial property. And I'd like to see a recommendation to staff that we include something in cleaning up our commercial lots as well in this, in this program, as well as residential property. There is three, well, two residential properties that we've taken action on, and I'm very glad about that, and there's a third one we are working on. I've got a question for Chief Dabney about this thing. Chief, in your opinion, is it obvious to you and your officers, when someone is taking advantage of the process and playing games, as opposed to a law-abiding citizen that has his RV out for, you know, loading it up in the evening, moving it, he may be gone for a week, and it may be, in other words, is it obvious who is abusing this and who is not? Mr. Grill has a point where there's obviously some real abuse in his neighborhood. Can you address that? Is it obvious?
I'll begin by stating that I learned from my wife that it's always dangerous for me to give my opinion. So, so I'll stick to--
Captain Demming can give his.
I'll stick to what I know. The, we've done quite a bit of research with other communities and talked to communities that have a total ban on trailers and RVs and et cetera, and communities that have a permit process. And there's the whole gamut that runs the state of California, and this is not a problem that's unique to Lompoc. It's affecting all over the state, and so councils up and down the state are looking at different ways to address this problem. There are people in the community who have learned the system, that simply stated that according to the way the law is written, if the vehicle moves, then we have to re-tag, and the 72-hour clock begins again. So there have been several numerous vehicles that we have tagged over and over and over. And yes, we know who those individuals are in our community that abused the system. Now, the other half of your question was, how does that play into people who are getting ready to go on a trip, et cetera? Some of the other cities that have enacted ordinances have been very, with their citizens, have worked out some very amicable ways to allow residents to get permits or annual permits, you know, for an RV that would be parked in front of the residence, or a permit that will span three days, when they can park it before they leave for their trip, and when they come home from their trip to load, unload, do whatever they got to do. Because the fact of the matter is, as one gentleman brought up, you know, when you come home from a trip, or if you're getting ready to leave at 5:00 in the morning the next morning, the obvious thing is to, you know, have your vehicle nearby so you can jump in it and leave. So there are several mechanisms, examples that are out there in the-- in it and leave. So there are several mechanisms, examples that are out there in the state. And what the city attorney has put together for you in the staff report are some of the options, not all, but they cover the gamut of different things that are available. And what we've seen in talking to other police departments up and down the state is that the best way to come to something that's mutually agreeable for your community is to have some dialogue between the people that are affected in their neighborhoods and the people that have the recreational vehicles and trailers, and then enact an ordinance that satisfies to the best that you can both. And with regard to the homeless issue that was brought up, that's an issue that Santa Barbara dealt with greatly. It's already illegal to camp in a motorhome on the street in the city of Lompoc. That ordinance has been enacted for, well, before I got here, so that's been at least 14 years. And what they've done at Santa Barbara is they've designated certain areas for those people to park. And they park there and they sleep, and then in 6:00 in the morning, they have to clear out of that area, and then the next night they can come back to that area and park their RV there. So there are ways around all these different issues, but it's really going to require dialogue and direction from council as to how they want us to go with regard to the city.
Thank you. So I think I heard you say that it is somewhat obvious, the abusers.
Yes.
Yes, okay. This proposal that, a recommendation that was put before us tonight, it puts some teeth into your ability to enforce the laws that we'd be putting down. Is that correct?
Yes, these proposals are more stringent than the existing ordinance.
Okay. So what I'm, I'm not recommending we adopt these, this is, I'm just thinking out loud right now. We have a complaint-driven process right now. I'm thinking out loud, remember, what if we got a proposal that gave the police department the teeth in a very strict policy that they needed to take care of these abusers and then have it complaint-driven? Mr. Grill has a problem in his neighborhood. He'd be able to use this policy to clean up his neighborhood. There's, I had emails today, and I'm sure the rest of council members have had many, where an RV is parked in a neighborhood, someone mentioned it today, parked in a neighborhood, and it's not been a problem. How would that, I'm going to ask the city attorney, if we adopted a policy that was very strict, yet left it as complaint-driven, how would we sit with that?
Through the mayor. The city isn't obligated to enforce its laws in any particular way. So if the city adopts a law that's more restrictive, some of the one that's before you, that is being considered, they can take the position that they're not going to aggressively go out and pursue prosecution of it. They're going to wait until a complaint comes in. That's not something that has to be written into the ordinance. It's just the way the staff would understand that the council would want it to be implemented.
Okay, thank you. Because frankly, I believe, and I think the rest of the council here, I believe the rest of the council believes that something needs to be done. I'd say better than 50% of the complaints I get since I've been sitting on the council have to do with code enforcement. If we do nothing, we're really not doing a service to our community. So something has to be done, yet there are many law-abiding citizens. We said we're going to make criminals out of an RV owner. We certainly don't want to do that. And there are probably good neighbors out there that have RVs. It's the ones that are the bad neighbor that parks in front of their neighbor's house instead of their house, or parks around the corner because they have to move it every 72 hours or have a business over there. Those are the people that I really don't have any mercy for. So what I'd like to see is us, yes, have a public meeting on this, some comment period, but I'd like to see us consider a very strict policy, but then have it complaint-driven, so we only really take care of the abusers and the citizen that is a good neighbor in every other way does not have a problem with this. That'd be my recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Lingle.
I think, I thought we were, are you, are you back for more? Okay. Finish your comments and advice, and then--
I would like to make one of the recommendations, which is to put back the commercial component into the code enforcement. And I would like to make that recommendation to the team. I don't know if we need three, three people, three councils in agreement, but the commercial component has to be put back into the code enforcement team efforts.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a comment regarding that, just so that the council has an understanding of what the staff's approach was? We didn't ignore any of the concerns that the council has raised, including the commercial. It's just there don't have to be any code modifications to start more aggressively enforcing the commercial issues. It's, we need a dedicated person to be able to do it and not just rely on complaints. So that's why we have the provisions that in here that talk about wanting to have a full-time code enforcement officer.
So my point then there would be that perhaps we need to divide this in two. There is the budgetary issue that you're saying, and there is one very particular issue, which is changing the code, the ordinance. So shouldn't they be separated?
Well, I think staff asked for advice on the five parking issues and as to whether or not they should proceed with a code enforcement team. I think the consensus is that we all would like to see a code enforcement team established. Let's look at the manpower, the staffing needs, and the cost, and have that come back to us next time, as was said. The, as far as, and I agree with you, I didn't see anything that excluded commercial. I think that code enforcement team should concentrate on commercial and some of the very serious abusers, like the three that we're going after right now, where we've tried everything short of taking legal action to get them to take care of a property that is a real hazard and nuisance in the neighborhood. If I may, with my comments on the five specific proposals that are before us, I would like to see staff develop something regarding street sweeping. I think we have to move towards that. I would like to see staff develop something regarding unhitched trailers on the street. I think if we're going to preserve the integrity of a residential neighborhood where there are kids playing on the street or whatever, there are some serious hazards with people that park unhitched trailers, whether it's a trailer full of wood with a big sign that says firewood for sale, or whether it's a trailer pulling a tractor, or whether it's a boat. It's going to be attractive to the kids of the neighborhood that are going to want to play on it and get hurt, and I don't think those should be on the street in a residential neighborhood. As far as hitched trailers, if they're moved and they're part of a company's business, and they're going out every day to mow lawns or whatever, the kids are not going to be playing when they come home, playing on the streets when they come home late at night. Anyway, so I'd like to see some latitude in that. As far as motorhomes and self-propelled recreational vehicles, pickup trucks with campers on it, the city allowed homes to be developed without access to the backyard. The city allowed homes to be developed with not enough setback in the front yard for those things to be parked off the street. And I know if people purchased a $60,000 motorhome or $100,000 motorhome, they're not going to have to sell it because they now don't have a place to park it. But there have been abuses, and I'd like to see us consider a permit process where a residence can have one vehicle, and it must be parked in the block where it's registered. That would eliminate the person that has 20 vehicles or 30 vehicles that are parking them all over the city, and have them, they must be parked where the residence is. As far as commercial vehicles also, I'd like us to look at our home use permit and see if we can't do the same thing and restrict any vehicles that have signs or whatever for that particular business to the place where the home use permit is. We tell them they can't park in the block where they've got the home use permit, so they go park in the next block and clutter up somebody's yard.
Just for clarification, if I may, Mr. Mayor, the way the code is drafted, and actually, I have actually written a response to Mr. Grill. He probably hasn't gotten it yet because of an email that he had sent, so I want to make sure that he understands the response is coming. The city's code doesn't prohibit a plumber who may have a home occupation for his, where his business is operated from, doesn't prohibit that plumber from parking the plumbing vehicle at the residence that the person lives, nor does it prohibit that plumber from operating or parking it somewhere else in a residential neighborhood.
Okay.
So I guess, am I hearing you say that you'd like to have something that restricts a plumber from being able to park his plumbing vehicle where he lives?
I thought he was not allowed to park it in his neighborhood. I, one of our responsibilities with zoning and code enforcement is to ensure the integrity of certain neighborhoods. If it's a residential neighborhood, it should be a residential neighborhood. If there's, we're going to give a permit for somebody to operate a business out of the home in a residential neighborhood, we should have that, the conditions such that the business does not take away or detract from the residential character of the neighborhood. And a big plumbing truck could do that. I don't know whether, I don't know how to make the sign, to make the size of the vehicle, or whatever appropriate to the, I know of places where large trucks are parked on the street. Somebody's got a home use permit, and you can't see the stop signs when you pull up to the intersection because they block the, and that one is a separate, that one could be separated. I favor a community forum with more opportunity for the public to speak after we get these things drafted, not limited to five minutes, not limited to speaking only one time, so that we can have exchange of information. And I would like to see the staff consider that. And finally, I do respect the principle of citizens being able to somewhat set the standards for their own neighborhood. And that's why I like the complaint-driven process for some of the violations that are not substantial, not truly dangerous to kids or possibly through traffic. In my neighborhood, I would not complain of certain things where I know other neighborhoods where everybody's lawns are cared for a lot better. The neighborhood might set that with the complaint might be opposed to what's in my neighborhood. I wouldn't file a complaint in my neighborhood on those issues. And I think the complaint-driven process allows people to set their own standards for their neighborhood. The code should be there if people wanted to file a complaint, but for some of the, some of the items, I would hope it would be a lower priority to go out and enforce. I have a neighbor who's using his, using his fifth wheel as a bedroom for a couple of his kids. I raised seven kids and was fortunate enough to have enough bedrooms in the house. He's got a large family, and I wouldn't complain. Neighborhood, the house is well-cared for. But if somebody does complain, the law should be there that with a complaint, they can go out and maybe somebody will hear of this and immediately file a complaint. I don't know. But I think those are, staff asked for our advice and comments, and I think we've all given them. Mr. Lingle, you want to take the last?
Just one quick question, Mr. Penone. In the staff report, it mentions, right now a complaint must be signed and it's filed, not necessarily released to the individual, but it's on file, and I guess the individual could have access to it. What's the reason for the complaint being signed? A lot of people are, you've got a six-foot-eight neighbor, you don't want to make a complaint against him. Is it a legal requirement, or is it just something we choose to do?
It's difficult for a city to start a process when it's relying on an anonymous complaint. So there needs to be some evidence and someone who seems to be concerned enough to at least want to say, I'm the person that's concerned, and so here's what I'm complaining about.
Is it possible, then, we have the complaint, if Chief Dabney wants to go and speak to the individual, we have the, it's not anonymous, or it's not anonymous, and he can go talk to them. Is it something that must be public information that the neighbor that has a complaint file against him has access to?
They don't have access to that. A complainant name will not be released to anyone.
Okay, that was not my understanding, so that's good to know. Thank you.
I think it's important to emphasize that it is confidential.
Absolutely.
Okay.
But it will come out in court if there's an affidavit or a request through the court.
Correct.
Mr. Barcelona, did you hear enough of us to get some guidance as to where we go next?
Staff will coordinate with the city council, schedule a meeting. It'll be properly noticed, and it'll give a forum to discuss many of the issues that we've talked about tonight.
Let's move on. This was the first item under council request because it was something we asked for some time ago. Are there any other council comments or council requests at this time? Council, Councilman Durham.
I had the pleasure of attending the salute to the arts that was held at Allen Hancock College on April 22. I was the emcee, and it was a nice event. The food was different, unique, but it was good. It had a great turnout for the kids and also the community. On Saturday the 24th, I attended the Special Olympic Area Games at St. Joseph High School. And when I got there about 7:30, quarter to 8:00, it's cold, wet, and I walk around onto the field, which by the way is a beautiful field. I look up into the stands, and there's just a sea of blue. You know, we might not have held the area games at Vandenberg Air Force Base, but the personnel at Vandenberg Air Force Base came to us, and I was very proud of them. They, everyone of them was standing, waiting to be assigned an athlete. And I tell you, they're a wonderful group of men and women. And the area games were great. You know, those people are just, you know, they're, in fact, our own Brad Wilkie attended the proceedings, and so did Councilman Roger. And I got a feeling we'll have both of them back again. On Sunday, the 25th, the PAL program held a pitch-hit-and-run competition at J.M. Park, and we had about 30-some kids present that participated in it, ages ranging from eight to 12. And we had a great time with them. Not too many coordinators got hurt, unlike when Ms. Martner played in the softball tournament. But anyway, on Monday, the 26th, I attended the change-of-command ceremony out of Vandenberg Air Force Base for Commander Buck. I'm sorry to see him and his wife go. They've been a great asset to the community, but knowing Colonel Boats, I have no doubt in my mind that he's going to fulfill the shoes very well. On Wednesday, the 28th, our own Joanne Plummer from Parks and Rec and myself emceed the Lompoc High School ethics class held at the high school, obviously for the seniors. And we had a fantastic turnout from the community. In fact, Chief Dabney was one of the table leaders, and former Sergeant Mike Collins, and Frank Lopez, and Officer Dave Lamar. I mean, we had a great turnout from the police department and the community. We had a lot of good information, a lot of good talk, a lot of good interaction. The three hours went by very quick. Then on April 29th-- Then on April 29th, Thursday, I went back to Vandenberg Air Force Base where I attended the awards luncheon at the Pacific Club, and, you know, again, it's heartwarming to watch these young men and women come up and listen to what they've achieved already at such a young career. You have to be impressed with it. Then on Friday, April 30th, I was one of many that attended Deputy Attorney, Deputy District Attorney Christie Stanley's memorial service in Orket. It was well attended. Sheriff Bill Brown was one of the speakers, and as usual, was quite entertaining. You know, on a personal note, I want to thank the community of Lompoc for supporting the Relay for Life this past weekend. Our, our, our team, Hope Floats, held the wine tasting event down at the river bottom, and the event raised approximately $6,000 in a three-hour event. It took many hours to get there, but during the three-hour event, so I really want to thank the community for coming out and, and giving your time and your money and merchandise to support it. Yesterday, I had the pleasure, and I'm glad I, I got wind of this before it happened, and I heard it later, one of our very own Sergeant Chuck Strange received a very honorable award from the FFC Lompoc Correctional Facility. This week is the Workers' Week Memorial, and Sergeant Strange was very deeply involved with a situation of a family member of one of the staffs out at the prison, and through his comforting knowledge and compassion, he made the horrific incident weigh a little bit less on the family. Sergeant Strange was very deserving of this award, and we were proud to see that they gave it to him. And just for information, on May 8th, between 9:00 and 12:00, we're going to have a trash and graffiti pickup and removal day, and if you'd like to attend and assist in that, we're going to meet at the Lompoc Police Department about 8:45 in the back parking lot. And finally, on May 28th, I will not be at the council meeting. That's the scheduled first night of the Every 15 Minute Program at, at Lompoc High School this year, and I will be from 6:00 a.m. and, on the 18th until about 7:00 p.m. on the 8th, or 19th, I'll, I'll be with them, so that's all I have.
Okay, Mr. Lingle?
Mr. Durham, with you not being at that meeting, I'm sure it'll be a shorter meeting, thank you. I have, I have two, two council requests, and I believe I will need support from other council members for these.
I know you said that.
Yeah, I know, yeah. First one, there's some good indications, or good indicators out there that the economy is hopefully starting to make a turn for the better. We're getting some signs of, you know, home sales, business, sales taxes are increasing, so there's some signs out there. With that in mind, I want to, well, not myself, but we want to make sure that Lompoc is ready to take advantage of the upturn. So with that, I'm requesting that on a monthly basis, we have a, a brief report from either our economic development, or community development director, Arlene Pelzer, or, or city administrator, with a report on what is happening, what has happened during the past month in economic development. Any good news that's happening, or if there's nothing happening, report on that, but I'd like to, to see a monthly report on what is going on in our community with economic development. And with that, Ollie, we'll need two other seconds on that.
I second.
First, first of all, I'd like to ask the question of the city administrator, is that a feasible thing, something that's, we can handle without a lot of difficulty?
Councilmember Durham, yes, that can be done. Now, I just, would we like to request direction? Would you like this information in your council box, as monthly, or a monthly report at the meeting?
I'd like it presented at the city council meetings.
Mr. Lingle, let me suggest, we first try to get a written report from the city administrator. We're already at 9:00 tonight and haven't got into oral communications. We're getting more and more proclamations, we're spending more and more time talking about upcoming events, and, and I, I think if we, if there's something important and we get a, get, get the written report, we could read it, or we can, all right, it'll be, if it's the city administrator's report as a part of the agenda packet, the press can read it, it can be announced to the public that way. And if, if we want to go beyond that, fine, but I'm, I'm, I'm concerned about the...
Mr. Mayor, I'm, with all due respect, I believe this report would be minutes. I can't imagine it, there's not going to be any debate, it's just going to be a report, what has happened during the last month, so if it, if it takes five minutes, I'd be very shocked. I could see it taking a couple of minutes. I don't think it's going to make our meetings go any longer.
Would it be a report that we would have in our binders?
Could be part of the staff report.
Mr. Mayor, I think that Councilmember Lingles is a good idea, particularly, I think that the fact that much work goes into our box is not necessarily heard by the public, and, and this is a public forum, and I think is of importance. The public is aware of our economic development efforts in the city, so I very much approve of having a status report in a public forum as to what is the city doing to enhance our economic development.
So, Mr. Durham, I still, I still need another second, if you're willing.
Well, based on what the city administrator stated, I'll, I'll be your third.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll start seeing those. Do you have any other items?
Yes, I have one more request. At the last city council meeting, it was, I was a little upset, to say the least, with one of the staff reports, and I had mentioned that I was going to be meeting with the city administrator and asking her to give a report. This is on the senior community center, and the development of, you know, why it has taken five years, six years, seven years, however long it has taken, and why it is now $7.6 million estimated at that. So what I'd like, I call it a root cause analysis, it may have other words to determine it, but what I'm looking for is a report that tells this council, this city, why it has taken so long to get to this point with our senior community center, why it is costing, at this point, possibly $7.6 million, what we did or what we didn't do to affect this, but most important, I'm looking for what we can learn from this to make sure that this doesn't happen again. And with that, I'll need two other council members to second that.
We have...
I think that's a tough request, Councilmember Lingle. Unfortunately, lessons learned, I don't think the city really knows why it took and where it went, unfortunately, and, and perhaps this is, I mean, we can talk about it, I guess, and take on the floor on this, but what you'll get back will be a justification of what happened, and I don't think we're going to learn anything from that, unfortunately.
Well, I beg to differ with you. I believe, if I'm, if I'm correct, I, if you disagree with me, but I believe mistakes were made in this process. I believe that we need to learn from those mistakes, and I believe with a report like this, this council and future councils will have an advantage of learning from these mistakes. Now, there are other projects, I mean, much smaller projects and much larger projects that have gone on in the city that have not taken the amount of time as this one has, and not cost this amount of money. So, I mean, I believe we can learn a great deal from this, that's why I'm making this request.
If you think that there are mistakes made, that needs to be brought up.
That's what this report will hopefully say, tell us.
I don't, don't hear any second and third on that.
Well, I, I have a statement, Mayor. It was my understanding through conversation and reports that the biggest drawback was the citizens of Lompoc wanting to look at and see if there's any other venue, or, you know, the size of the building, and, and it kept coming back to council, and council kept saying, "Okay, well, we'll look into it." I'm sure that there were mistakes made, there's no doubt in my mind, with a project of this size, but I think that, from what I understood, the longest delays were us, the council, doing the citizens bidding, checking into what they were staying at different council meetings.
That process took maybe six months. This process for the community center is now going on six or seven years. So, yes, the community input took some time, but not five years.
Did we have a first?
I will second, if, if a council member has an issue and thinks that there has been wrongdoing and there's been mistakes made, I will honor that, whatever that, whatever their circumstance is. I am, I, I think that's just due diligence, and, and if a council member thinks that there is something wrong, I will have to second it, whatever, whatever the project may be.
And that's exactly what I was going to say. If, if you have that strong of a feeling about it, then I agree that we need to look into it. So I, I do make a third.
All right, can we get a report on the history of that, detailed report on the history of that project?
Staff will begin the work.
Mr. Lingle, do you have any other council request comments?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Martin, do you have any council requests tonight?
None at this time.
Okay, there's a couple that I have. One, I saw in the census, I saw in, on the census report this week that Lompoc is divided into 10 areas, and the report was that between 68% at the low end and 70%, 72% at the high end, that was the number of written responses to the census questionnaires. Census is now starting a new phase where they're going door-to-door where they didn't receive a response. I urge everybody in Lompoc, if you didn't fill in a written, welcome the census taker to your door. If you hear of friends, neighbors, someone that says, "I'm, I don't want to be counted, I don't like to give the government the information," it will, you'll get, the individual information will get lost in the overall amount, but it is critical to the city of Lompoc because some of our tax dollars are distributed on the basis of the number of people that the census agency reports live in, in Lompoc. So, the other item that I would like to report, we normally report our, under Assembly Bill 1234, we, we report any trips that we have taken at the second meeting of the month, or the second oral communications period, council committee. I'd like to mention that three of us from Lompoc did go to Washington, D.C. for a 40 trip last week. There were about 50 elected officials from Northern California Power Agency and the Northwest Public Power Agency, which was Washington, Oregon, Idaho, Montana, and public power cities there. We took three messages to each of our, our, basically three messages to each of our legislators. The first one was to make sure that all stimulus money that's available to private power to do what you want, build new, more modern, efficient plants, make sure that that money is also available to public power to do the same thing. I'll mention that we'll hear later on tonight, I hope, about the Lompoc joining in building a power plant, some of the stimulus money is being used to fund that, and it's saving us about $20 million in financing costs, as I understand it, to be able to use that stimulus money. We're very receptive that Senator Feinstein introduced a bill to do that, that very thing. The second message that we, that we had left back there was that in the, in the legislation that, energy, climate legislation, give credit to those, those power agencies that have already started producing clean power. Right now, the coal-producing states are having to abandon coal because it really is producing dirty air, and when they, when they abandon the coal, the cost of their power goes up. The cost of their power right now is about half of what the cost of our power is because we did what was right 20 years ago and stopped burning, and stopped polluting the air as much as possible in making our electricity. And the third, and, and we ask that if you're going to give federal dollars to those states, that you recognize that what's already been done here. The third issue that we mentioned back there was the, that the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission and others are imposing regulations on us that are becoming more and more administratively burdensome and expensive to comply with, and we don't see the advantage of it. That message was heard real well. I moved this up because I want to give credit to a couple of local legislators. In these legislative visits, there were three of us from Lompoc, and we visited Congressman Gallagher, we also visited Congresswoman Capps as, as our representatives. There were representatives there from St. Lodi, from Alameda, from other public power cities, and we feel it's a little bit more advantageous if, if a delegation of, of six or eight people go in to talk to the legislature, legislator, instead of just three. So, we participated in some of the visits to legislators that represent Alameda, or represent Santa Clara, or represent Lodi, and nowhere did I see the kind of response and respect for Lompoc that I saw in both Congressman Gallagher and Congresswoman Capps. Congresswoman Capps doesn't even represent our district. She welcomed us, she said she's always proud to see Lompoc come, she used to represent us, and she hopes that we'll continue to visit her. And there's a plaque that Lompoc presented her for, that's prominently displayed in her, her front office. Congressman Gallagher gave us 45 minutes, almost an hour, whereas no one else had more than about 15 minutes of, of time. So, we were received very, very well back there, they listened to the points that we made, and they, they, I think benefited the community. We did find a little bit of time to walk around in between visits, and I met this guy on the street. Councilwoman Martner had a similar picture taken of her hugging and kissing the president, but she wouldn't let me show it tonight, she said that it was inappropriate. You'll have to see that one from, from her directly. That was taken in an arcade across the street from the hotel where we stayed, so that concludes that, that report. We'll go, we'll go through oral communications and then take a 10-minute break, so let me ask the public that's in the audience to come forward and speak to us, if you have anything you want to say at this time.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Joyce Howerton, Lompoc. Well, this council meeting's been riveting so far. I just wanted to invite all of you in the council chambers and anyone listening at home, tomorrow night at the Lompoc Library at 7:00, we're having a forum on waste, and it's all the story of stuff. And when I first heard about this, I thought, could anything be more boring, except the presenter is so good, and so entertaining, and so knowledgeable, and he looks at what people are doing around the world in terms of recycling and reusing merchandise and, and all the stuff we generate. So I would really encourage you all to come out tomorrow night, 7:00, Lompoc Library, and just hear about what people are doing worldwide, because in the following month, we're going to have a repres- we're going to have a representative from the city and one from the county talking about what we're doing locally and how the community can become involved in doing more, because it's up to all of us to help get rid of some of this waste. So I look forward to seeing you all tomorrow night. Thank you.
Martin Vanino, City of Lompoc. It's impossible for me to come and talk at a city council meeting and not talk about solar, so I just want to thank the city for organizing events on the 20th of May, I'm sure it's going to be mentioned other times as well, but you can never mention it too many times. Several of us solar owners will be present to give our experience, our point of view. The city will be talking about what the city does to promote solar, the advantages of solar, and there will also be integrators there who actually install solar systems. So, one other time I'd like to mention to everybody, May 20, the city is organizing a solar event, and I urge everybody to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vanino.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, can the time be given of that meeting, and where?
Good evening, Ralph Harmon. Something's been bothering me since the last meeting and has to do with what Councilman Lingel brought up tonight, and I think what's being proposed with your request here puts our administrator, Barcelona, in kind of a bad place, because, well, it's nice to sit up there and blame public comment, public input, staff, and all that. You folks are the ones that must provide the leadership, you are the ones that provide the direction to the staff, you are the ones that make the decision. Ultimately, it's in your lap, it's not the staff's lap, it's not Barcelona's lap, it's not the public's, it goes to you guys, that's where the buck stops. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who wants to speak, public comment? As I said, we will take a 10-minute break. There was one other brief announcement that I had on my notes and I didn't cover. Maybe many of you realize that for the last 20, 25 years, we've had a National Day of Prayer on the first Thursday in May. That proclamation was prepared by the president this year, and a court ordered him to withdraw it. Lompoc has never issued their own because we felt we were under the sweeping national proclamation of a day of prayer. So, we didn't prepare anything locally. The president has appealed that ruling to the Supreme Court, and I just urge people to, as an individual, to recognize the intent of that and recognize that we are dependent on support from other than within. Okay? Let's take a 10-minute break and be back here in 10 minutes, prepare to continue the meeting. Are they in the back? Okay. My light's on. We'll call this meeting back into order, such as it is, and at this time, we're going into, no, we don't go into these yet. We go into the consent calendar, right? Okay, we have two items on the consent calendar, what's the wishes of the council?
I make a motion that we accept the consent calendar.
I second.
Moved and seconded, let's vote. The two items on the consent. Legislative issues, we've got an item here which, to me, is no-brainer. The state of California's been playing with franchises for cable TV for some time, they passed a law that will jeopardize our ability to continue to fund the community access. I'm going to take your thunder away from you and try to move on. There's federal legislation which will give us back the authority to get a franchise fee and to be able to get the money for the community-access TV, and this is a resolution to support that we can send to our legislators to support that action. Can I first ask for dispensing the staff presentation, and can we deal with this? Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor. What are the wishes of the council on this item?
Well, Mr. Mayor, just to begin with, I mean, if you look at the physical, you know, physical impact, you know, I appreciate Rich being here, but when you're telling me that if we don't do this, we could lose over $200,000 a year, well, it kind of makes, yeah, a no-brainer. So, I make a motion that we accept staff policy, or recommendations.
I second.
Second? Those in favor? Let's vote. Those opposed, don't push a button. Okay, it passes, four with one abstention. The next item on the agenda is the Lodi Energy Center. Mr. Stasi.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I understand you want to move through this quickly, so we will do that, and if you want to back up to any of our slides, we could also do that. We're seeking, you want a staff, first I should ask, would council want a staff report?
Let's walk through the briefing charts. We're going to have, I didn't even call for oral communications in the last one, I'm sorry. I will make sure I call for oral communications on this next one. We are being asked to commit to about, spend about $18 million of the city's money towards building, towards building our share of a power plant, so I think we ought to go through the power pipe presentation and the key points, at least.
Okay, we'll be quick. We're here to get city council approval for participation in the Lodi Energy Center. It's an electric generation station that expected to have 13 other governmental agencies as utility participants along with the city. We've been participating in ongoing plot planning activities for over five years through our membership in NCPA. The cost of power from this project has been taken into account in recent rate adjustments that were made by the council. I wanted to start the presentation by introducing Ken Spear, who's got lead responsibility for the project with NCPA. He'll report on general information on the project, and then I'll talk about how the project fits into Lompoc's current and future needs. There may be a few minor, non-substantial differences between my staff report and Ken's because Ken had the advantage of being able to have his report right up to date, and our staff report deadline was last week, but if we come across any of those, we will point them out to you. So for those of you that haven't met Ken Spear before, I'd like to introduce him, he's an Assistant General Manager with NCPA.
Thank you. The Lodi Energy Center, and just real quick, this is an artist, the slot, the plant on the bottom there, and I don't, does this have a pointer on it? That's the existing STIG facility, you guys are partners in that project now. This is the Lodi wastewater treatment facility, and this is the new power plant that's being It's a 280-megawatt power plant, it's enough for about 280,000 people in the state. Expected energy cost is around $69 to $72 per megawatt-hour. It is a reduction in greenhouse gases, I think Ron probably will talk about that. Key thing, all the permits are in place. About two weeks ago, we got the CEC permit, took us about two years and about $20 million to get that permit. It is the most efficient plant in Northern California. We did not look at Southern California, doesn't mean it isn't in the state, we just looked at Northern California. The two bottom one there are the two new power plants that PGE has built. Gateway at the very bottom there went online last year, Calusa is under construction right now. So you can see, this will be the most efficient plant in Northern California. As a result of the efficiency, it also has a lower carbon footprint. You can see, again, it's the lowest carbon footprint of the natural gas plants in California. To put this in perspective, if you have a coal plant, it's going to produce about 2,200 pounds of greenhouse gas per megawatt-hour versus a 794. You guys are currently buying power from the market, the market has about 1,100-pound carbon footprint, so this represents a significant reduction for the city of Lompoc and the power you're currently buying from the market versus the energy this plant would produce. Cost of the project, construction cost is $375 million. Finance cost, and there's still some work being done there, but won't be any more than the $76 million, and those include reserves that are needed for the project. At this point, about 50 percent of the cost are currently under contract. We got the bids in for the construction yesterday, they're being evaluated, the low bid fits within the structure of this. Assuming that holds, we'll have about 86 percent of the project under contract, which means there's not a lot of uncertainty left in the remaining part of it. This is how the costs break out, there's a little bit of, you know, I think Ron used the 1336, mine has the newer number slightly higher, and that's mainly due to some of the reserves if we do the Build America bonds, there's some additional financing that'll be required. In my analysis, we use the same interest rate that we were using for non-utility or for regular utility, public utility financing. We would not do the Build America unless it was cheaper, so that number, mine's on the high side. The other item on there, you see the A and G and the scheduling, those will actually result in, this project will get charged that amount, but you guys participate in all the other projects at NCPA, you'll see corresponding reductions in the other projects. So the net, to you guys from NCPA, you won't see a change in this, you'll see some hitting this project, but you'll see reductions in the other areas. We're not adding any more support staff at NCPA for this project, just direct labor to operate and maintain it. This is a evaluation of the project, and what we're, you know, the long and the short of this, whoops, go back here. The bottom here is the debt cost for the plant, this is the variable cost, the bulk of that is the fuel, fuel's by far and away the largest component. The red line represents just the value of the energy produced from this facility, but it has other products that come off of it, one of those is capacity, you will need to be buying capacity in the future. There's also expected to be in the ends of resourced markets where it'll generate additional revenues that come in and reduce the cost. And so when you take a look at participating in this project over the life, it's expected to save on a net present value of $456 million for all the participants of the project versus just buying from the spot market. So it's a very economic project. One of the things we did look at is what happens if carbon tax comes in or cap and trade comes in. You see, the value actually goes up, and this is really meant as a sensitivity, because it is more efficient than the other options out there, as those costs come in, it'll raise the cost of this project, but it'll go up less than the alternatives you would have if you were just buying from the open market and others. So this is really meant more as a sensitivity than it is to say this is absolute, but if a carbon tax does get added, the value to you does go up. The schedule, probably the key things here, financing, we're hoping to complete the third week in May, absolutely critical we do that, we have the Power Island contracts and pretty significant deadlines we need to meet, and some payments with Siemens, with the commercial operation date, June 2012. These are the participants in the project, so you get a lick of who else is in the project. They're unique for NCPA, we actually have four members that are not NCPA members, we have the Department of Water Resources, we have Azusa, we have Perpa, and who's the fourth one here, Modesto. So we actually have four non-NCPA members participating in the project.
But they are still public power units?
Yes, they're all public. City of Lompoc, you guys are in for approximately 2 percent, and that four decimals is so that we get 100 percent on the financing. That equates to about 5.6 megawatts. NCPA will issue the bonds for the project, and that will cover all the funds to construct it, the cost of issuing the bonds, and any reserves that are required on the project, debt reserves, operating reserves, those kinds of things will be in there. So the Lodi's share of that is about 9.2 million, and then your annual debt service, this is, you know, is 600,000 per year, 608 per year. This is a project, because we all are public agencies, subject to CEQA. For power projects greater than 50 megawatts, the CEC runs a certified regulatory program, they are designated as the lead agency. They completed their final decision on April 21, 2010, only about eight months late, but we did finally get it. And as responsible agencies, all of us need to take and do our own findings under CEQA and issue a notice of determination, both in this county as well as the county that the project will be built in. And real quickly, I'll run through kind of the results of the CEQA. No real major findings on the project, I'll cover, greenhouse gases will be reduced, that was addressed by the CEC as a part of this project. Other emissions from the plant, we had to go out and buy emission reduction credits, so we have bought all of, you know, somebody else was polluting, there's an offset ratio, we've bought all of those, no public health safety. Biological, there was a potential impact to the giant gardener snake and a couple of birds in the area, that's been mitigated by buying a conservation easement on approximately 21 acres around the site, that's, I think, a three-to-one offset. No findings in the other areas. The only other area that had a finding was there is a local benefit to Lodi, it creates some permanent jobs, about 200 construction jobs, but all the other areas, really no major findings, a number of conditions that have to be followed, but no major findings from the project. That's it, Ron.
I'm going to pick it up and talk a little bit about how the project applies to the city. NCPA started the project officially when the commission authorized it in November of 2006, and you can see, we've had past council authorizations to participate in the planning process, which was Phase Two, and under that, we did preliminary feasibility and the purchase of the emission reduction credits that Ken had mentioned. Again, the participants, you see, Lompoc is in Group A, it's 56 percent of the project financing will be done with this particular group at a rate expected to be about 4.5 percent. California Department of Water Resources is financing also through NCPA, but with 25-year bonds, so that they will match their water resource delivery requirements, and Modesto is financing this project along with other projects and bringing its own money to the project. I put this slide in because I wanted to show you that we have participated in other NCPA projects. NCPA's total asset value is about $1 billion, and in all projects, we're about a 2 percent member, and so this is historically the projects that we've been in, they've all been successful, and they go back as far as 1983. This is probably the most important slide, if you look on the right side, you can see our share of the project participation, our construction cost share will be 7.5 million. Annual financing cost will be 607,000. To put that in perspective, that's about 3 percent of our budget when the project comes online in 2012. And we'll get about 40,000 megawatt-hours, which is about 28 percent of our current sales level. The project energy cost will be about $2.7 million annually, and that's about 13 percent of our budget. So you can see, the project itself will be filling about 15 percent, 15 or 16 percent of our total budget, and like I mentioned, electric rates are adequate to support this project. One of the key things about the project is its use of gas fuel, and the cost is highly dependent on gas, and if you look at this five-year history, you can see how gas prices have fluctuated. You look at the $7 level, and that's the value used in the study as most likely. You look at the $7 level, and that's the value used in the study as most likely. Now, you can see the little red line that only covers about the first third of the left side. That's where prices are today. And so you can see that the prices aren't as volatile as they've been in the past. And if you look at what our costs will be, the study value is probably a good long-term number. Energy costs would be $69 per megawatt hour. Ken's presentation said 69 to 72 because of some additional costs that will be financed. But if you look at where we are today, you could see the price is at 450, and so energy costs would only be $52. If you look at the five-year low and the five-year high and the high-low average, you can see that the prices are still reasonable and compare well with what we're paying now on the open market. And just going back a minute, you could see most of the volatility is at the higher-priced end. So when we look at like the high-low average, it really kind of leans more toward the higher prices. However, the higher-priced terms tend to be over shorter periods of time, and the prices tend to be more at the lower level. This shows the current situation we have. The light green shows the short-term contracts we have in place. So we purchase energy out about a year, year and a half in the future at fixed costs through a bid process. And then you can see in the final three years, the gold, which is when the load I Energy Center comes in, and pretty much it replaces those purchases. So this is just a blow up of that over a shorter period of time. And you can see, we still have periods of time when we would be in the short-term market, which is, I think, an advantage to us. Most of the curve, if we were to break it into the high-load hours, which are more expensive, and the low-load hours, you'd see that we have a lot more purchases in the high-load hours, and low-load hours is when we'd be in the market most of the time, when power is relatively cheap. There's often what they call dump energy, where plants that don't want to come offline are selling power very cheaply. So what I'm showing with this is how we're going to take the green project, which is our purchases, and replace that again with the gold. That's the load I Energy Center coming on in the 2013 to 2015 timeframe. And then in that unsubscribed area, we will move some of our purchases in the midterm, the green blocks, into that area. And so that light purple at the top would then consist of short-term purchases and daily purchases in the market, which we think is a good balance in how to run the system. Another thing to take away from this chart is how we are quite diversified with our fuel sources. We don't have any coal, which is terrific, but we do have the geothermal at the bottom, and we have the hydro, and we have the dark red showing occasional peaking use of some of our small gas turbines. CEQA was covered by Ken. The only thing I'd like to state is the last statement there that shows that NCPA and each of the participants are responsible agencies under CEQA and have to adopt findings independently, and that's part of the recommended action tonight. Wrapping up, I'd like to just go through the contracts briefly. We have two major contracts, purchase and sales agreement. The key elements of the power sales agreement are, it authorizes NCPA to finance, construct, and operate and maintain this project on behalf of the member participants. And under the governance, it's important to note that it establishes project participation committee, and so we will have membership on that. And that's what directs the operation and planning of the needs of the plant as well as the natural gas purchases. And under the legal provisions, it's a take-and-pay contract, and that means, you know, like your house mortgage, if you're gone for the month, you still have to make your house payment. And if for any reason the plant is at reduced capacity or offline for a period of time, the debt service continues on. There is a six-month debt service reserve to help in making those payments, however. These are some of the other additional contract details that aren't as important, except maybe the first one, which says that NCPA is responsible for the fuel, but they do have a couple mechanisms that we could make the fuel price a little more predictable. One is hedging products, and the other is physical gas brought to the project either by an individual member or through advanced purchase at fixed prices. So we do have ways to reduce the daily volatility of the natural gas market. And the second major agreement is the power management and operating agreement. And let's see, probably the most important thing about that is, as is mentioned before, it's directed by the power members themselves as far as how the plant is operated, and a key operational responsibility is in the top one in the middle column about NCPA's obligation to operate the plant and perform certain functions for its members. This is very common in joint project operation to have an agreement of this type, and most large power projects today now are joint projects, unless they're built by one of the major IOUs in the state. So this format tracks what in the past we have as facilities agreements for the other projects that we're in. It's, you know, tied to the power sales agreement, and there's a procedure for scheduling and generally approved practices that will go through the participants committee. Additional project details, I think the key one was already mentioned, which is the second, about the daily fuel being obtained by NCPA. Participants can participate in various gas acquisition programs as members of the project as well. So concluding, we're here to request following actions under Resolution 563110. And just briefly reviewing them, it's to adopt these California Energy Commission findings relating to CEQA, to approve the purchase and sales agreement, approve the power management and operating agreement. And one additional item that I'd like to call your attention, it is in the text but not in the reso, is to authorize an adjustment in the city's level of participation in accordance with criteria set forth in the staff report. I doubt we would want to exercise this option because we feel we are properly sized for our needs, but should it become necessary or should we want to do that, this does allow us to move up in proportion to the other project participants. And that concludes our presentations, and we'd like to request approval of participation in the load I Energy Center. And Ken and myself are both available for questions. Thank you.
Mr. Lingel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Stasi, I think it was your second page, you mentioned that the second phase of this project started in November 2006. What was the first phase, and when did that start?
Okay, that's a good question. The first phase in NCPA's parlance is someone will have an idea, like, we need a new resource, let's go out and look at a few options. And so without incurring costs on the participants or potential participants, basic screening is done, some suggestions are bought back, and the participants then would cull through them and say, that looks like a good idea. And so the participants then will make a decision, we want to study this in detail, and they'll go to the Phase Two. So the Phase One is kind of a placeholder for, we're thinking about doing something because we need a new resource, and it's not a formal phase at all. And then Phase Three is always the commitments.
Okay, thank you. It's quite an aggressive schedule, and, you know, you've got it from 2006, starting at completion 2012, aggressive. So I guess my question is, what's NCPA's history on completing a project on time and on budget? I mean, we're going to be paying for this, and it's important that we start realizing the benefits of it as soon as possible, and you've got it in 2012, so.
I think, you know, let's start, talk with two things. You know, the last project we did, major project, was the hydro project, and that actually came in significantly under budget. I don't know about schedule, long before I got here. Can you talk a little bit about the project team that we have on board to build this? Ed Warner is the project manager. Ed comes to us from Calpine, where he built five of these, almost identical, some of them two-by-ones versus one-by-ones. He's got a team around him that this is probably the least experienced, this is their third one. The permitting team that we have on this, I think, has licensed the last seven or eight projects in the state. We have Willie Parsons doing the engineering. We're about 35, 40% done with the engineering versus typically 10%. But there, the bulk of this group, besides Willie Parsons' number across the country, the bulk of their group came from Calpine, where they built 18, 19, 20 of these projects. So we have a very, very experienced team. We're out on the construction bid now, and we do have a pre-qualification in there that we're not allowing someone that hasn't built one of these projects, but I think two is the minimum that even be allowed to bid on it. So I think we have a great team for this. You know, typical construction time is 20 to 24 months. I think you're seeing, we're showing a 23 and a half month schedule there, very doable for what we've got.
So the typical is 18 to 24 months, and?
20 to 24 months, yeah.
20 to 24, right, okay. And the project team has completed their prior projects in that period of time?
Yes, and for me, this is the third one I've been involved with.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Martin.
Yes, I have a question regarding Slide Seven. I don't understand it. Slide number seven. Mr. Stasis.
I'll show it to you in a minute. Gas sensitivity?
Yeah, so I guess what I want to understand is you have this study value that is based on the price of gas of $7, and that is, that is the value that was used for?
There, good, thanks.
Okay, explain this slide, please.
Okay, I was trying to get him to catch up. For purposes of planning the project, the project team and its consultants tried to figure out what is the most likely gas price to use for the purpose of the study over the life of the project, and they selected the $7 per million BT use of gas as a price. So then we went through that exercise, develop, well, what's the energy going to cost if that is the case? And then the second thing I did, just to show the sensitivity, I went to the next column and say, well, what's the price of natural gas today if the project were online? It's $4.50.
Okay, and then you talk about the five-year low and the five-year high and the high-low average. So I'm just kind of curious, $7 is really non-representative to any of those other columns.
But if we go back to the previous slide, if you were to just kind of eyeball that five-year history, and it's actually five and a half because the red line represents how far we are into this year, I don't know what number you would conclude is a reasonable, which you might call, observation about what those price averages might be, but I would say they'd probably be below $7 historically, and so the $7 is a good number to use for planning purposes. If we miss that number and the price is higher, we're still better off because our plant is more efficient than the other plants using the same gas at the same price.
Okay, so.
Ron, I can give a little more on that $7. What they, we have a planning group, and what they do is they take a look at the forward prices on natural gas, and they typically go out about four or five years, and then they'll apply some judgment as to what they think could happen, and normally it's some sort of inflation adjustment. They then do a net present value back on that, that's how they came up with the $7 gas. So it's a mathematical way to sort of, it's a forecast that's going to be wrong, but it's a forecast based on kind of what you can buy. And when we did all the analysis, it was $7. I think right now it's down to about $6.50. I mean, if you were to do that same forecast today and look at what you could buy for five years and then do some sort of escalation, instead of using 7?
Oh, I see, it's going down, yeah.
But right now, today, gas, I think, is $4.38 or something like that, so it's even lower than that today.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Will put in an added comment or two. Most of the agencies that are participating in this wanted to take more than their allotment, but there's only 100% of it. So the risk that we take, if one person fails, somebody will step up, is really a very minor one. And I'll also comment that 30 years ago, the city of Lompoc bought into the geothermal, and it's producing electricity for us 24 hours a day, seven days a week. It's the cost of the electricity there with the debt payment and the operating cost is just about the same as we'll be going into this facility. And that one has been reliable, cheap electricity for us for the last 30 years. That one's going to drop significantly in two more years or next year, when the debt is paid off. In 30 years, when the debt of this is paid off, it will not, it won't drop as much as geothermal, because the big driver on this is the cost of gas, but it doesn't have the Our hydro is risky. If there's no snow, we're still paying a very heavy amount for the dams and the power plants, and the cost of electricity we get out of there if it's a very dry year can be three times or four times what we're talking about here. So this one is stable and quite predictable, and there's people lined up that want to take our share if we don't take it. Any other questions, council? Let me open it for public comment. Is there anybody that would like to speak for the public on this issue?
Will Skyler from Lompoc. That's probably more of a question for the mayor. He's been our representative at NCPA for quite a number of years. When I had the pleasure of serving in the city council, we were invited to go through the load I plant one time, and I was kind of intrigued about it, that uses a jet aircraft engine to produce the power. And Mike very graciously set up a tour for us, but that particular day, the plant wasn't operating. A young man there that worked there was, I saw a Jeep parked out in the parking lot, and being an off-roader, I, you know, always looking for new people, places to go, and formed a relationship with him and told him I was kind of disappointed, didn't get to see the jet aircraft working. And he said, well, you come back anytime, and you give me the call, and I'll set it up when you come in. I did stop two additional times up there, and both times I was there, it was not operating. They said, well, it's just, if they get a demand, then they'll fire it up and produce for that, but it's not online 24/7. And tonight, before us, we want to add on another one. Maybe in the two years that I haven't been involved in NCPA, electricity has doubled, or, you know, why are we going here? The thing with, so could you just maybe, satisfied with my own curiosity, what's changed or what's happened?
Two different purposes in our portfolio. The existing load I plant is what's called a peaker, and the electricity use goes up very high at 2:00 in the afternoon, and it drops off very quickly as the afternoon cools, and you've got to make electricity for that peak. So all we do is turn it on for 15 minutes, for an hour, for whatever, two hours, whatever is needed to beat the peak on that graph. And this one will be producing 24 hours a day, seven days a week for us. It's a lot more efficient and a lot cheaper. Do you want anything to add, Ken?
Yeah, I assume you're talking about the STIG facility there on Highway Five? We have a couple of jet engines that we use. We do have our peaker projects that really are. aren't supposed to run. They're so, they're cheap capacity, but they're very expensive to operate. But when you need the power, you don't have any choice. You don't have a set of batteries somewhere to go get your power. Those peekers primarily ran just, you know, fifty percent of their hours came during the energy crisis, when there wasn't energy available in California. That's why you own a plant like that. The other one that is in Lodi is the steam-injected gas turbine. It's kind of an intermediate designed to mix with a hydro, and, you know, its forecast when it was built was to run about 15% of the time. That's kind of where it runs right now. It's primarily in the summer period. This plant, when we take a look at, is forecast to run about 80% of the time. The other time that it would perhaps not run is right now, when you have all of the hydro melting, and you have all of the water coming down through the hydro system, and loads are low. They've got no place to put the energy, so price gets very cheap. What will happen in that case, this plant will back down. Instead of paying $50, at $7 gas, to run this plant, you'll get power off the market at $35 a megawatt hour. It actually has a benefit in owning the plant, so.
Mr. Schuyler, if you want to go up that way at any time, we can give you a tour. If you want to tour the 20 acres and see the acres set aside for the gardeners' snake, you can see that, too. We built one other plant. We had to put in a conservation easement for butterflies, didn't we?
I have a quick question. Does PG&E do this as well, this juggling of cheap power versus expensive power in peak hours and that kind of thing?
Yeah.
They do?
Yeah.
So this is a standard practice that is done to minimize, I guess?
Yeah, electricity is a product, the minute somebody throws a light switch on, some generator has to pick that load up.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Any other comments from the public?
Danny Hayes. I've been with NCPA for many years. I started out as manager of planning for NCPA, and I retired from LA Water and Power. And so I've been in the utility business for many, many years, as you know and other people know. And I think this is an excellent plant. The base costs are there. You're going to produce a base generation schedule. You've got the heat recovery system, and from all of the indications that you've presented, it looks very fine, very great. And gas price, like an airplane, is the thing that dictates its operating cost. And gas prices are going to, we had a bubble many years ago, and we saw it go down to $3.50 for five, six years. Everybody went to gas and dumped oil. So we had all the oil plants in LA Basin change over to gas. The gas bubble didn't stand around that long. The liquefied natural gas imports coming into Mexico, as you probably heard in Washington, how this affects that gas price down in Mexico, and why they probably have cheaper power available to them. So your competitors are there, and if you allow LNG shipping into California, you undoubtedly would have cheap gas and cheaper electricity. But I'm not promoting one way or the other. I just know that in April of this year, the California Public Utilities Commission, this last month, allowing power aggregation within the PG&E and Southern California area grids. And if you think about splitting the county of Santa Barbara, it would have been right along the split between PG&E and Southern California Edison, mainly because of the rate structuring and the industrial and commercial status of the two, of this county itself. So that's another whole ballgame. But in any case, if you think about what could be done under the new California Public Utilities Commission, and this means you could use investor-owned utilities, are fighting this, they're putting lots of money into this election issue that's coming up, and as you probably will see more and more of it, they don't want to have the public power possibilities within their grid. And you've got the possibility of increasing utilization of this plant within the Lompoc grid. And that would bring back possibly Gore-Tec, other large electrical users which had to leave because industrial rates were coming not even competitive. So I would like to say, how does the council feel about the aggregation of maybe Mesa Oaks and the Village into that particular area of the aggregation law that's just passed and the utilization? You can serve outside the city limits in an aggregated system, those areas which are connected to the city. And they're all connected into the city. I just brought this up for discussion.
Thank you. I think that's something we can talk about offline. It doesn't relate to the plant tonight, but yes, if I was living up there, I'd look forward to being served by Lompoc. I will comment on one other, one other advantage of this plant. It's specifically an advantage to the city of Lodi, but the cooling will be done with wastewater from their wastewater plant. So it helps them with a, with an environmentally challenged project. It helps them out, and it is providing the water for us to use in the cooling, if we, as I say, if we go ahead with this project. Are there any other public comments on the issue before us? All right, let's, let's take the recommendations that are in the staff individually, A, B, and C, because the first is approval of the, of the findings and the, what do you call it, the, CEQA? Yeah, EIR. And that's an action that we have to take, and that every one of these members said he's asked to take. Well, we'll take them all at the same, at the same time. B is approve the power sales agreement, again, under which we're, we're going to be operating, how we're going to allocate the power to the project participants. And number, number three is to designate the city administrator as the official responsible for appointing from time to time or changing as necessary, the city's representative. There will be a special project participant committee set up for this, because there are members in this who are not members of NCPA. So at times, NCPA will be voting, and at times, it'll be the project participant committee that are voting on this one. I would hope that maybe Mr. Stasi and I could be designated, at least for the remainder of this year, on that. Yes, sir?
Mr. Mayor, there was also item number four on the staff report.
Okay, item, item four, that's correct. Item four that we'll also vote on, it's not listed on the blue sheet, is the one that says that if somebody else drops their share, and for some reason doesn't participate, and we want to go to two-and-a-half percent instead of two percent, we can go forward and pick up an additional share. I can guarantee you that if somebody does drop part of theirs, there'd be a lot of arm wrestling and a lot of people standing in line, but it does authorize us to, to go forward. So can we have a, have a motion on all four of the action items?
I would like to present a motion if the council is ready. It's okay. I will move that we accept, we approve the four items, one, two, three, and four.
We have a second motion?
Second.
Move, second it. Is there any comment, further discussion? Let's vote. Four oh one. Ken, thank you for the trip down. Hey, I've driven this thing after 10 o'clock at night, if you would. Next item on the agenda, again, thank you.
This is Lockhart. Good evening, Mayor, members of city council. I'm here tonight to present to you a request by Good Samaritan Services Incorporated for a 3% 30-year residual receipts home loan for $232,000 for permanent financing and other improvements at the Recovery Lee Home Shelter Facility at 608 West Ocean Avenue. The recommendation before you tonight is to consider a request for a 3% 30-year residual receipts home loan for $232,000 to Good Samaritan Services for permanent financing and other improvements at the transitional shelter, and if council approves the request, to authorize a city administrator to execute loan documents and all other documents required. Just in summary, the city back in 2008 provided a loan to Good Samaritan Services for the acquisition and improvements at the 608 West Ocean Avenue site. That site used to be a florist shop and has now been converted into a home 16-bed facility for women in recovery and their dependent children. The facility cost a little over $2 million, and it was obtained through a variety of grant financing, including a $1 million grant from the state of California. Part of the financing involved a bridge loan from the Santa Barbara County Housing Trust Fund. That bridge loan was originally going to be paid off by a grant by the Weingart Foundation. For a number of circumstances, that financing only partially came through. So $300,000 of the 560 was obtained through the Weingart Foundation. They were also able to obtain another $50,000 in an anonymous donation that was applied toward that bridge loan. At this time, Good Samaritan is asking for a home loan to basically pay off that bridge loan. That would allow them then to focus in on client services. They also want to make a number of improvements, including some flooring and a brick wall to provide safety and security to individuals at that facility. So we do have a couple of representatives who are here from the program who can speak to the issue. If you have additional questions, staff is recommending that the loan be made. We're using a source of funds which can only be used for affordable housing purposes. So, you know, with that, I'll just ask if you have any questions.
Questions of staff?
Thank you. Diana, maybe one of the representatives may want to address this, or if you can. Originally, when this project came before the city council, there was consideration of commercial space, and it looks like, according to this, now we're going to be relieving them of the possibility of commercial space in this building. I thought when that came before us before, there was a land use zoning issue there, and could we, could we address that?
Part of the issue, I think, we learned was that the use of the commercial space was not a condition of the project, and it was something that was going to be administratively looked at, so it wasn't a condition of approval. I think at the time that the project came before the planning commission, there was the idea of possibly turning that commercial space into a thrift store type of use. I think that Good Samaritan has looked at the marketing of that particular space as a thrift store. I believe they feel that the market is somewhat oversaturated with that type of use in the community, and I think they're looking at some other uses, possibly uses for client services, for a food bank type of program, or for other services for their clients. So I don't know if they want to speak to that issue, but that's basically what's being considered.
And maybe they're going to address it, because I just want to make sure that the original approval was not conditional.
Yes, my name's Sylvia Bernard. I was here, I'm the executive director of Good Samaritan. I was here at the time. And it was not, it was not a condition of the project, but it was a proposed portion of it. At that time, one of the, the, part of the, the one piece that I felt was important that we had heard from those that were appealing it was the fact that we had not done our homework. There was three or four thrift stores within blocks of that, of that area. Since we actually went through that process, we had a thrift store in Santa Maria that we actually had to close down due to the economy. So we know that in the history of doing it, and the economy as it is, it would not be able to probably economically make sense for us during these, these times. We have gone to the city with ideas of services that would use that commercial space really for more training of our clients, or for services. We could use it, for example, for a childcare area and move it to that front area. We could also use it for some kind of food pass-out program. We do that in Santa Maria, which would benefit not only the clients we serve, but clients in that community. There isn't a food pass-out program, according to the Santa Barbara County Food Bank, in that area of the, of Lompoc. And we know that there's a lot of families over there that could benefit from that. So we are open to work with the city on, on a resolution for that property, that piece of the property. Right now, we use it, to be honest with you, on meetings that we have with other organizations.
Okay. And then one other issue. Can you just discuss briefly, you talked about the delay in your submission of financial statements, which also hindered your ability to get the additional $300,000?
Yeah, my name is Jack Boyson. I'm the chief financial officer for Good Samaritan Shelter. And, yeah, we had a delay in getting our audited financial statements done for our fiscal year ending 6/30 of 2007, I believe it was, when we were applying for the Weingart grant. We missed their cutoff for application for that particular fiscal year, and so they threw us into the next year when we did, just because of the timing. And it, as it turned out, it was right in the middle of the, the stock market crash, and they had significant portfolio losses, and basically were only able to offer us $300,000 instead of the $560,000 that we were being recommended for in the first year.
So their, their comments to you was, was based on their investments dropping down, nothing to do with?
Had nothing to do with the project. No, they fully supported the project, and as a matter of fact, they were, you know, we were, I think, the only project that was actually funded in the following year at, at that large of an amount for Weingart, for this type of capital project.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have any questions? We'll open this one up for public comment at this time.
Mayor and Council, Will Schuyler. Actually, I think one item is probably just housekeeping. I lifted the agenda on the computer date, and it said 608 East Ocean Avenue. That is an error?
It was an error.
Okay.
One, the staff report did identify it as West.
It is, it is West, okay. I thought we'd have a new, maybe a new facility on East Ocean Avenue. Okay. And the other is, we talk about state home funds and federal home funds. This one doesn't say which would have been, whether it be state or federal. Thank you.
For this particular project, we're looking at state home funds. The only distinction is the state home fund grant is controlled by the city at this time. It is funds that have accrued to the city on the repayment of an old 1992 state home grant to the city that was issued to first-time home buyers. We are still receiving income from that fund as those homes are sold off. And so out of that source of funds, we are proposing to use for this, for this project.
Mr. Durham, any more, any more comments from the public? None, seeing none, we'll close that, and we'll bring you back here. Tony?
I just have one question. In reading the, excuse me, the documentation, it, it appears that all the funding comes to Good Samaritan through either grants or donations. Is there any other funding that?
We receive a limited amount of funding for those individuals that do have fiscal capacity. We do charge nominal client fees for services. So we do receive them, we do receive some client fees. client fees. We also, as you've stated, we receive donations and funding from various government sources, including the city of Lompoc, which provides us some support, programmatic support.
Thank you.
Ms. Martner?
We are done with the public testimony, and it's back to the council.
Yes, I think we.
Okay. Thank you. I would like to say that I am definitely in support of this motion. I've had some experience with Good Samaritan Services, and I do think that they're very well managed. I think they provide an invaluable service to the community, and I have volunteered there and have heard from the clients. If they didn't have this, they would either be homeless or in jail. So it is a valuable project, and I thank you for doing this and managing it so well.
Seeing no other questions or lights lit, what are the wishes of the council?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I thought Councilman Martner was going to make the motion.
I am ready to make the motion if the council wishes. I will move that we accept the recommendation of the staff, number A, I mean, letter A and B.
I second it.
Move and second it. Let's get our votes. No other discussion? Thank you. Congratulations. Now, if you'd just wait, please.
That's right.
You've made the financial guy real happy. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
And that's right, next year, we need to win. I'm still on the Lompoc team. I have hope that we're going to win next year. Thank you.
Good.
Members of City Council, I'm here again to present another request to you. This is on behalf of 513 North G Limited Partners, which is the Santa Barbara Housing Assistance Corporation, to modify an existing state home loan for $150,000 for the Homebase on G residential facility at 513 North G Street. The recommendation is that City Council consider a request from 513 North G Limited Partners to modify the existing promissory note contained in an existing state home loan for $150,000 to Homebase on G, which is a 39-unit affordable housing project for the chronically homeless, mentally ill, and if approved, modify the relevant portions of the promissory note so that the loan can become a 3% 55-year residual receipts home loan, and to authorize the city administrator to execute the loan modification documents and all other documents required. Again, this is another good project that was done back in 2006, where the city was able to leverage with $150,000 a multimillion-dollar project, which is on North G Street. It's a beautiful facility, providing housing to a very difficult population to assist. 39 units, independent living facility. At the time that this particular loan was done, and it was done very early on in the project's development, it was done for pre-development funds, very early, and at the time, it was going to be done as a 0% deferred loan, with the expectation it would be paid back once this state governor's initiative funding, if it ever came, would be used to pay off this loan. Since that time, again, as the project has gone forward, the project did incur some unexpected development costs. We do have the project developer here for additional information, if you'd like more clarification on that. But essentially, what we're asking is that that $150,000 be left in the project as permanent financing, which it can be done. There's no need to repay that loan. And so what we're going to ask council to consider is to convert that loan, rather than it being paid off or paid back, that we convert it to a residual receipt note, which, as a residual receipt, it would be basically an annual payment based on whether or not the project was able to accrue any type of profit after expenses are subtracted from income. So that's the recommendation before council tonight, and if you have any questions, we do have Frank Thompson, representing the project, who's also here this evening.
Is there any questions at this time? Mr. Lingle?
Ms. Lockhart, what type of reporting mechanism does the city get to make sure that we are getting any due monies that are coming, should be coming towards us?
What we ask is that there would be, it's an audited annual financial statement, prepared by an independent auditor, not the developer, which would identify all of the income that was received by the property. That would be rental income, or any kind of laundry income, or whatever was accrued to the property. They would also identify and substantiate the expenses of that project, and then present the city a report of that difference, and identify whether there would be a residual.
Okay. And let's say for the sake of argument that there was no residual, okay? And at the end of 55 years, what happens with the money at that point?
If there was no payment, the expense would be rolled into the next year, so that at the end of the 55-year term, the loan could be due and payable at that time. Some loans also can incorporate a forgiveness provision, so that if, for example, there was no payment, that payment could be forgiven. That's another option, if the council would like to do that. Otherwise, what we would do is we would just roll the payment into the next year.
Thank you.
I just have one question of Mr. Thompson, if you will. Are you full now?
Sure.
Do you have a waiting list?
I have about 15 people on the waiting list now, so.
Providing a tremendous service to Valley. This is a, as it was said, the population that's very difficult to serve, and they've got a wonderful facility and wonderful opportunity to live down there, and I commend you for what you're doing.
Thanks. It's been a tremendous community partnership, and we appreciate all the help we've gotten from churches, from the county housing authority, from Transitions Mental Health, and the other mental health providers. I did want to point out, of the 37 client units that we have, because we have two resident managers, we have just one person that had Lompoc connections that moved here from Santa Barbara, and we had one person that had family here that moved from Santa Maria, but the other five were all Lompoc, or 35 were all Lompoc residents initially.
I don't have any other questions. We'll open it at this time for public comment. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak to the issue before us? Seeing none, we'll bring you back to the council. Is there?
I'd like to move that we accept staff recommendations.
I second.
Move and second. Is there any questions or comments further? Let's take a vote. And that one passes without a ghost vote. You're on a roll.
I know. Third's a charm, okay.
The rough one you save till, it goes to 11 o'clock, right?
And I think you have a closed session after this, so we're trying to wrap it. What we would like to do in this item is the de-obligation of a reservation of $768,934 in federal home program funding for Casa de Desarrollo, a proposed 20-unit affordable housing project. We're asking council at this time to de-obligate these funds. This project is a proposed 20-unit affordable housing development for adults exiting the foster care system against it. This is a proposed project, it was never built, and to make that reservation available to other eligible affordable housing projects. This project had its inception back in 2005. It was proposed by the Lompoc Housing and Community Development Department, I'm sorry, Community Development Corporation, and at the time, they were pulling together various sources of funding, and again, the city only receives $200,000 in home funds in any given year. So they, for any project, we need to roll monies forward to have any amount to accumulate for a project. So as that was moving forward, they were also applying for low-income housing tax credit funds. They were unsuccessful in obtaining those funds, and they are now into about the fourth or fifth year. We did hear from the developer that because of state funding shortages and changes in focus, that funds for this particular clientele would no longer be available, so this particular project does not look feasible in the very near term. So we have heard from the developer on that, and what we're asking council is to formally de-obligate the funds. Again, there was no loan documents, so it was just a reservation, so that we can then be able to reallocate those funds to another project. So that's the recommendation.
Any questions at this time from, yes, Mr. Lingle?
One quick question. I see no one from LH CDC here. I'm assuming they were notified that this was going to be on the agenda, though?
We did send out a staff report to them that this was going to be on the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Open up for public comment. Anyone in the public like to speak on the issue?
John Lynn, City of Lompoc. Obviously, if they're not going to build it, we need to de-allocate the funds. I would simply ask this council to encourage staff to try to find a similar program that can fill this need. You know, as a scout master, I've had youth in my troop who were in the foster care system, and some of them had foster care parents that hung on to them and helped them after, and some just, when they turned 18, they were out on the street. One hadn't even graduated from high school, and it was just horrible. It's probably the saddest thing that I see that we do to our young people, and I would hope this council might encourage staff to look for a similar program with the decrease in value of multifamily properties now. It could be that Mr. Thompson or another group could find an existing facility that these funds might be adequate to bring online. I would just ask the council to encourage that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lynn. Anyone else hear a comment? Seeing none, we'll bring you back to the council. Any further questions? Mr. Durham, your light was lit first.
Well, if council's ready, I make the motion that we approve staff's recommendation to...
Got a motion, we get a second?
I second it.
Is there any discussion on the motion on the floor? No discussion, let's vote. And that one passes. And that one passes. Number of letters regarding the waste rates and some communications regarding vehicles on the streets. Have we have any other communications we're going to bring up tonight? Then oral communications, another time for those that haven't left to stand up and get their two minutes, if you want, at the podium. No one's rising. Any final council requests, meeting reports, what have you? Ms. Martner?
Mr. Mayor, I need to do a meeting report on our trip to Washington, D.C., but you have covered it very well. I just want to put it in the public record that I was one of the attendants. Thank you.
No other lights lit. Let me make a couple of comments on meetings that are to be held. At the end of this month, there is a meeting at the Geysers to celebrate two things, 30 years of producing electricity at the Geysers, and also to dedicate a solar array that's being used to pump the sewage effluent from Lake County up so that we can inject it in the wells and create more electricity. I'll be going up for that. There'll be a commission meeting at the same time, but if any council members would like to go and see the Geysers, it's a good opportunity. Also, the date is tentative, but I've heard that June 16th will be the groundbreaking for the construction of the Lodi Energy Center, which we joined tonight, and that will be a ride up to, just past Stockton, and I'm sure there'll be a lot of fanfare associated with the groundbreaking for that activity. And if anyone else would like to go up and see the facility, take a tour of the facility adjacent to it that Mr. Skyler mentioned. Well, I've got a son that's flying a big airplane that's got that same GE engine in it, only his doesn't stay on the ground. It is an impressive facility. That's all that I had at this time. Is there any further comments from staff? We are going to recess now to a closed session, and that will be in the conference room, utility conference room?
No, it'll be in the room right outside the lobby.
Oh, okay.
And just for the record, and because we're on the tape, it's not anticipated there's going to be any reportable action, so the adjournment isn't going to occur on the tape.
Oh, okay. I didn't know you could do that, to say that, all right, we're in recess.